Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, April 26, 2022, 6:45 in the in-person in the hearing room, which is wonderful. We're also doing hybrid. So welcome to all of those that are participating via Zoom. I call the meeting to order at 6:47. First item of business is public comment. If there's anyone within the room. I'm good here. If there's anyone participating remotely that would like to comment, just please raise your hand as you've done in the past. Ms. Burns, Fiorey Burns, we could allow her to speak.
Unmute, okay.
Welcome, good evening.
Can you hear me now? First of all, I did not realize this was an in-person meeting. All the information said that it was Zoom. So I know that you had asked me to be there, but I didn't know it was in person. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yeah.
Okay. Second of all, are you going to take public comments within the sections that you're discussing? Or do we have to make the public comments at the beginning and at the end?
If you just like if it was an in-person meeting, if you have something you'd like to add, absolutely.
I'm sorry, what?
If during a discussion you have a particular comment, just raise your hand.
Okay.
During, as long as it's pertaining to discussion at hand.
Yeah. Was this meeting announced that it was in person?
It was listed and posted on the town website as being in person. It's a hybrid meeting?
I guess I just assumed when it had a Zoom, like it was a Zoom meeting. My bad.
If you hurry, you could get here.
Well, then I might miss part of it, right?
Warm up, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, is that for your public comment, Ms. Fiorey?
Do you need me to be there for the presentation for the Citizens Association?
So do you have a presentation?
I wasn't asked to. I was told you wanted to discuss it. That was my email from Melanie, was that you were looking to discuss. There wasn't anything mentioned about a presentation.
You don't have to do a presentation. The board, you know, certainly that was the intent, as with any article, is to answer any questions the board may have and share any information regarding your article that you think would be pertinent to us as well.
I think we probably have to talk about if she preferred to come in and we can take advantage.
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't know what your timing's like. But if you prefer to come in, then I think we can accommodate that.
Yeah.
And what about item 3B? When will that be taking place in the next 10 minutes?
I think we have two interviews that we have that are in the room that we said.
So she wants to be here for those.
Right. So I think we could do this, the interviews first.
Shift them off?
Yeah.
We could.
Okay. All right. Yep. Well, if that's what you prefer, I'll be there.
It's up to you. We're just trying to accommodate what's easiest for you. I mean, certainly.
Which would you prefer? I mean, I'm happy to sit here at my desk in my computer. It's fine. But if you would prefer me to be there, I can do that.
I mean, it's up to you. I don't think the board, I mean, we certainly, Patty, we certainly can ask you questions regarding your article, and you can speak to your article via the Zoom.
Okay, then I'll just stay here.
Okay.
I have to feed my dog anyway.
Priorities, of course. All right, thank you. Is there any other public comments? Please raise your hand. Okay, and I see none. So first on the agenda is Youth and Family Commission Proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Malanowski, but just for the public to be aware that Friday, May 6th, is wearing green across the town to raise awareness and show support. So, Ms. Malanowski, I'll turn it over to you.
So, thank you. And we have Mr. Joyner with us and Ms. Dombacher from the Youth Commission. So, welcome to both of you. We're very honored to have you here. And I was very happy when Sarah Castle asked if we could do a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. And I think, you know, given the environment that we're in, especially in 2022, you know, getting hopefully into an endemic stage, I think we're seeing the value of what the Youth Commission and the Youth Family Services Department provides to the town. So, I know I speak on behalf of the board that we're very honored to present you with this proclamation. And so I'll hand this over to you. And then a few more things to say about Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank your commission on our behalf as well.
We certainly will.
And then I just wanted to highlight a few things from the Youth and Family Services Department. So green is the awareness color for Mental Health Awareness Month. On Friday, May 6th, residents and community members across town will be wearing green to show their support of Mental Health Awareness Month. So we would appreciate everybody dressing in green and be on the lookout for complimentary green awareness ribbons around town to enjoy all month long. Secondly, the Youth and Family Services is sharing a number of events in the month of May that include speakers, community walks, movies, and book discussions, and a presentation for parents on supporting their stressed teens and tweens. Many of these are collaborations with other departments in town. So please visit the Youth and Family Services website for details on these events and how to register. And lastly, the department staff will be doing an outreach all month long at various events, and they will have information about their services and will be available for questions. So please stop by and say hello and learn more about what this great department does.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of the Youth and Family Services, we appreciate the recognition and the proclamation, and they work very hard, so it's great to see this recognition. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in person today as well.
Yeah. See people in person.
And I look forward to the chance to recycle, reuse my St. Patty's Day outfit.
Okay, same, same. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Next up on the agenda is discussion of Article 25. Why I put this on the agenda was specifically, Mr. Healy, I have a question for you. I know you are going to be speaking to this at town meeting, and I didn't know if you wanted some type of backdrop or a presentation or just a map. And Chelsea, can you bring up?
I can.
Marty, this was a suggestion as a backdrop. You tell me as you're going to speak to this, and I believe town council this as well. Just wanted your thoughts. If you wanted something different than this, then we can get it to Jay. So just bear with us two seconds, Chelsea. No, that's okay.
Okay, for anybody at home who has the packet, it's page 15 of the original packet.
There you go. Marty, can you see that? Oh, probably not. Hold on a second. Hold on one second, sorry.
Can you all hear me okay?
I can hear you. So Marty, this was a suggestion is what we could put on the screen for town meeting. It's in your packet as well. It talks about the square footage of the easement for both.
Yeah, this, you know, it's interesting. I sat down with Ms. Galligan before I headed out of town, and she gave me, I asked her for a number of items, and she sent them to me, including the one she sent me was not as clearly delineated as this, so this is great. So yeah, this I will incorporate into, I've got three or four other pictures of the site, as well as the some of the mockups that were done back in, I think it was February, March of '21, that laid out what the plans were. So this is a great addition to that. I will replace the slide that I had for that. So yeah, it makes perfect sense.
And can you get that over to Jay as soon as you can, so we can get it incorporated into the presentations for town meeting?
Sure, sure. I'll send it to him sometime tomorrow. Yep, that makes perfect sense. And I also, I'm not sure who put it together or what the collaborative effort was, but the timeline on the process, I mean, it doesn't have everything, but it's got some important sort of structure to how the process played out. So that's also very helpful. I don't think, I don't think that needs to be in the packet. I mean, I think that can be talked about rather than put up on the screen, but I'll think about that. As I said, I thought that was also well done.
Okay, perfect. And that was Chelsea, someone she's going to speak to that. So okay, so that's fine. If you could get it to Jay, that would be great. So then the moderator is aware of it as well.
Yep, no problem.
And one last point I wanted to make on this, just a reminder that this article is strictly about whether the town supports an easement or to keep the license in place, not about specifically any part of the process or where we are at today. An easement is a permanent right in property, whereas a license, which is not an interest in property, is a temporary right to use the property and is revocable. This is an important distinction. As an easement is an interest in land, not a mere contract by right. In order for the board to bring this forward as a public way, it would need to be done under an easement. A license would not under that. So that's just some additional information, Marty, that I'm sure you're going to touch on anyway, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there is I was trying to get an understanding through council as well.
Yeah, no, Lisa, I appreciate that, and I think at least some folks on their board are aware that I've had, you know, continuing discussions with, among others, St. Mark's over the last several weeks about stuff unrelated to this, but not surprisingly, the topic comes up. And also not surprisingly, St. Mark's remains incredibly supportive of, you know, this effort of making a, you know, what I think are terrific improvements to that little triangle on Route 85. So that's just a quick update. I'll talk later about the other conversations with St. Mark's. I'm not quite sure when those are going to come up, but I'm happy to do that as well.
Correct. Again, I just wanted to clarify, Marty, there's been a lot of questions regarding the article itself and the four corners of, you know, what the article is, and it's not about process, not about the park, it's about.
An interest in property.
Property, yes. I see Ms. Fiorey has her hand up. If we can unmute her. Ms. Fiorey, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, one of my Bluetooth died out, so it's being recharged. So I wasn't sure whether the microphone still worked. I have a couple of questions about the license and the easement. I'm going to keep it very directed to that. In the, you just showed a map that was Exhibit D, I believe, in the packet. There's also a map of Exhibit B, number three. So the way I understand this went down according to the timeline. When the application was filed for a history walk to get the grants for the shared streets and spaces from the state, the map of Exhibit B, number three, was the one that was sent in with the application. Is that correct? This one, thank you. Is that correct? That's the one that went in with the application?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so if we could just look at this map for one second. The portion where it's showing where it's showing the state who's going to give this grant, what you want to do, which is this history walk that is all outlined in red, and the park that is in the little dotted line stuff, it's all in this shaded green area. Now, if we look up to the key on the upper left, it tells us that shaded green means that it's town land. So when the application was filed, it was filed giving them a map showing that this property was town land. Is that correct?
So the red, though, shows areas subject to license agreement with St. Mark's School for Public Use.
I'm only talking about the big green chunk of stuff that we look at, which is the first thing we look at when we see this.
Again, as Chelsea said.
Green thing, the legend for that says it's town land.
Subject to license agreement for St. Mark's.
I'm sorry, the legend up there, does it say that? It says town land, right? Are we, we're agreeing with that, right?
I think, I think we're agreeing with you, disagreeing with your interpretation of it.
Sorry, it's hard to understand how I can disagree with an interpretation where there's a big green splotch of stuff, and the key for that green splotch says it's town land. I understand that you're saying areas subject to license agreement with St. Mark's School, but you're also pointing to a whole stretch of stuff that's on the eastern side of Route 85 that isn't part of this, right?
And again, as Marty said, Patty, I think, yes, what's on the left-hand side is town land, and it is not subject to license agreement with St. Mark's School for Public Use. That caveat is not.
Wait, wait, okay, now you're getting even more confused. So you're saying that the arrow pointing to the top is saying this is where the licensing agreement covers, but the arrow pointing to the bottom is not where the licensing agreement covers? Because that's kind of not what it's saying.
I think the arrows incorporate that whole.
They don't.
And Lisa, the.
Because then you're saying that the licensing agreement includes all the way down to the public library, which is not true.
But Lisa, if I can, I mean, this was, and this is, I think, is getting a feel from what the article is about. These are, this is part of a submission.
Because this is the easement that we're supposed to be voting on, and I don't understand what property you're talking about.
Well, that is laid out, that's laid out in what Ms. Brascio put up earlier, that.
Yeah, so let's go to that, let's go to that map. Let's go to that map. So now we're talking about the big pink area, right? So the big pink area is where all this work is going to be done. If I go to the key describing that big pink area at the top, now my name is up there covering it, so how do I get?
Oh, sorry.
There we go. Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry. Okay, so the big, the key for the big pink area says St. Mark's property transferred to town. Where in the licensing agreement or the easement, does it say that this property is being transferred to the town?
That is what the easement is accomplishing. It's transferring a property, but.
It's not transferring a property. It's giving.
Excuse me, it's, it's, excuse me, it's transferring a property interest. That's property.
So are you saying that the town is then going to own that property? Because that's what I understand. If somebody transfers property to me, I own it.
You, well, you do. You own the easement in this instance. That's the property interest, and easement is a property interest.
Well, I think that being a tad disingenuous to what the point is of, so on the one hand, we have this license agreement, and if we look at the license agreement itself, it says in the third, whereas down, the parties that agreed to swap easements on the two above described portions of property, such easements depicted on the plan of land entitled Sulfur History Walk Property Plan, blah, blah, blah. Next one says, whereas the grants and acceptance of easements by the town requires town meeting approval, such town meeting tentatively scheduled for the spring of 2022. Next one says, to facilitate parties' respective projects as described above, parties have agreed to grant interim license to enter into the property and perform improvement. So that would lead me to believe that this is all determined dependent upon it being approved at town meeting, where we are after ex post facto to approve easements on property that the town has already paid for work to be done. Am I missing something?
Pursuant to the licensing agreement, correct.
So if we don't approve at town meeting Article 25 of the easement, it should make the licensing agreement null and void. Is that correct?
That's wrong.
But it's saying that the licensing agreement is determined by the easement being accepted at town meeting.
Right. If the easement is not accepted at this town meeting, that doesn't, that doesn't negate the licensing agreement.
And if the easement isn't accepted at this town meeting, that doesn't, you don't think that means the town is trying to tell you something?
Well, that's not your, that's not your question.
Well, that's my question now.
I don't know what the, I don't know what would happen at town meeting. I don't know how a vote would be interpreted.
But you're essentially saying the same thing that Mr. Dennington said in one of the working group meetings, which is that it doesn't matter whether the town passes the easements or not. It is essentially, doesn't matter.
It does matter because it's a different, again, an easement is a property interest. That's why, as opposed to a licensing agreement, the exchange of a property interest has to be done pursuant to law by the town meeting. Therefore, in order to accept the easement, in order to transfer the easement, it has to be done by town meeting. That has nothing to do with the licensing agreement, but it has to do with the transfer of a property interest.
But not a property transfer.
Again, you're.
We're not transferring, we're not transferring, transferring property, are we?
Well, except you don't, you're not accepting the definition of property, and easement is an interest in property. You can disagree with that, but that's the law. It's an interest in property. That is what will be transferred by these votes.
Okay, so you know what? I'm not an attorney. I didn't go to Harvard, but I'm a taxpayer. And I'm telling you, this, it doesn't make sense. You're telling me in one place that property transferred, quote unquote, and you're telling me that's only because there's an easement, but there's not an easement. There's only a licensing agreement, and then you're going to ask this ex post facto to approve an easement. And on the previous map, it was just coming out and saying that this was town property. Do you see how I, as a taxpayer, am really concerned about the way this was all presented?
I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying. As I said at the beginning, I disagree with your interpretation.
And you disagree with why I should be confused as a taxpayer?
I disagree with your interpretation of how you describe this, and I think that's adding to your confusion.
Okay.
I think one of the key points on the easement piece, Patty, that you had actually raised at one of the prior public comments is the license will not allow the selectmen to make this a public way. We can only do that if we have an easement. So I think that's a, that's a key point.
You know, Chelsea, here again, you, as the Board of Selectmen and the DPW, are making all the decisions ahead of time, ahead of getting approval from the town, of telling us where our money is going. You're making the decisions and then saying you're misinterpreting it. In regard to, I'm sorry, what was it? The, not the licensing agreement, the.
Easement.
Oh, the chapter, the public way. So what you're going to do is you're going to use Chapter 90 money to create this road, right? And you can't. At the time that you're creating the road, the road doesn't belong to us. The property doesn't belong to us. And I don't care whether you say it's an easement or not. It doesn't belong to us. And you're using taxpayer-funded money to build the road with, according to the town council, the expectation of multiple years in the future, since we've taken care of it and managed it and paid for its upgrade, we'll just assume it's ours. Is that really the right way to approach this? Is it? I mean, you know, you have property that you're building a parking lot for St. Mark's. Now, in the original letter for the original licensing agreement, it says, the school desires to perform and construct certain improvements upon the, you know, 1,634 square foot portion of the town's property consisting of public road, blah, blah, blah. So they're looking to make improvement. How much does St. Mark's spend it? Because the last I knew, Mr. Healy had thrown in $20,000 of taxpayer money to cover the cost of the grading, graveling, and curbstones to create that parking lot. So I don't understand that St. Mark's is paying for anything. I mean, you can tell me again if I'm misinterpreting it, but I think there's way too many questions here to just give me a blanket, you're misinterpreting an easement.
Lisa, I'm talked out on this. I, it, the article is pretty clear. There is a, there's an easement that is laid out on this map that would, in order to the benefit of the town, there is an easement laid out on this map that is significantly smaller that would, in order to the benefit of St. Mark's. That's what the article is, period.
Andrew, Sam, anything to add?
I understand Ms. Fiorey's comments and ready to move forward.
Andrew, Chelsea, anything? All right, Ms. Fiorey, thank you.
So I guess in conclusion, the only thing I can say is that I hope every person that shows up for town meeting votes against this article because I think it's disingenuous to the purpose or what the purpose may be. Okay.
We appreciate your thoughts. Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is Ms. Malanowski, St. Mark's portion of the overall bid project.
Thank you. So I attempted to put together a high-level timeline that, as Mr. Healy alluded to, is not everything in the timeline, but what I tried to do was, I think we're all getting questions either privately or hearing questions in public meetings. And so what I tried to do was come up with key points that I thought maybe were unclear or hadn't been presented in a prior board meeting. Obviously, there's a lot more emails, documentation out there included in public records requests, as well as our meeting packets. And so I was really trying to hone in on some of the key things that I thought people were looking for. And so I just have five points to make based on the documents that are in the packet. So one, the state was aware initially through the application and follow-up questions to Ms. Galligan that part of the project was not going to be done on town land. The permission letter, which is Exhibit C in the packet, was submitted to the state and acted as an agreement between the two parties for the work. and acted as an agreement between the two parties for the work to commence. Um, second point, the funds used, grant or otherwise, do not trip the anti aid amendment because roadways and infrastructure are exceptions to that rule. Third point, the state was aware of the difficulty to get the bids within reason and were flexible with the scope and timeline changes. Four, the, there are two Excel documents, one original and one that has, um, that's entitled revised. And those show the three bid packages that went out, um, from the DPW. Um, and the first one was the original bid package that was just for this project that, uh, we rejected because it was too high. The second one was a narrowed down scope, um, that took out some of the bells and whistles of, um, some of the finishes on the project. Um, that, that again came in too high and the third bid, um, included the larger downtown projects of Main Street, some of Deerfoot and Flag, um, to try to get some efficiency efficiencies, um, in that bid. And that was the, um, bid that was accepted by the select board on August seventeenth of 2021. Um, and the first Excel document shows four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of, um, that third bid that made up the St. Mark's pocket, pocket park as well as some of the other items that needed to happen as if the road was not there. The revised document shows the amount of the pocket park, two eighty-seven that, um, is the park that park alone, assuming that all of the infrastructure is in place. So I just wanted to show those two differences. Um, and we, the, the state is aware that some of the final pieces of the park have not been complete. A lot of plantings couldn't have been done in December, so they were flexible and plug and play on, um, some of the infrastructure items that needed to be done. Um, as part of the prep work for the. And the fifth point is, um, I think my biggest, my biggest takeaway from this project is I think we've already taken a position that we will, um, rely on capital planning or at some future point, another board or committee to vet, um, the roadway money, um, and make sure that we understand, um, before we go to bid, all of the, um, the roads that are going to be included in, um, a bid package, um, and make sure that we have it on, on the, um, plan and, and that the selectmen sign off on it. So I think we, um, have that in place. Um, I think, was anything nefarious done with this project? No, I, you know, I think one of the takeaways though, that we need to understand as a board and as a town is that we want to continue applying for grants. We need to be flexible and understand changes can happen, especially given supply chain issues that we're experiencing right now. And we just have to do the best that we can, can do to maximize any opportunity that comes forward. So, um, those are just the points that I wanted to make on, um, what I took into.
Great. Hold on, Chelsea. Sam?
No questions.
Andrew?
No.
I understand.
Marty?
I'm good.
Okay. I see Ms. Fiore has a question. If we could please unmute her.
Thank you. And Chelsea, thank you for the emails that you sent to try to clarify this. Um, I guess my question is when you're saying that changes can happen, everybody gets that. My question and, well, my point, I think, is that the way that this grant was applied for, I'm sorry, Mr. Haley, am I keeping you awake?
Excuse me. Please be respectful. Thank you.
Um, he looked like he was falling asleep. I wasn't sure. Um.
Not after your interpretation. Thank you.
This application was filed on January fifth. And VHB had already asked, been asked to create a plan, which included uh, the map that we saw earlier showing, uh, town owned property in very highlighted green. And that was supplied with the application. And the way I also understand it, there was a, um, budget that was provided by the VHB for that. And that, was that the budget? Was that the two hundred and ninety thousand one or was that the one? That didn't have the prices. I'm not sure. I think it was the two hundred and ninety thousand one because that's dated January fourth.
The, the original, oh, sorry.
Right. So there's a, there's a, a budget, or a, let's see. I think it's, it says estimated by CS, January fourth, twenty twenty-one. So my assumption is this is the budget that was supplied with the application that went in on January fifth. So this two hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Ms. Melonelski, she's trying to respond to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking down at my papers and not at you.
That's okay. I didn't want to interrupt you. So the original VHB estimate was five hundred and something thousand.
What is the date on that one?
Uh, I think that was on the original application. So January fifth.
This is dated January fourth, the one that I have.
Is it five, is it five, five hundred thousand?
It's, it says, uh, the subtotal is two hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. The cost overrun contingency is twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven fifty. It says the total is two hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. And then it says they, quote unquote, two hundred and ninety thousand.
So that was this, that was the revised one because what happened was we originally bid out, we originally applied for the grant for five hundred and eighty thousand. And the state came back and said it's a max of three hundred thousand for this grant. So that's where the revised one came from, which was the two eighty.
Uh, okay. So two ninety was put in on, was estimated on January fourth. The application was filed on January fifth. So if I look at this, this.
Right. It was. It was originally applied for on January fifth for five eighty, Patty. And then VHB, I'm sorry, the state came back and said it's a max of three hundred. And that's when VHB gave the revision of, um, two ninety.
So the application was still for a Southborough History Walk, right? I mean, that's what the grant was, that's what the grant was titled that it was for.
It had several, um, components to that and, um, it included connectivity gathering spaces, sidewalks, a whole list of, um, items in the, it's in, um, attachment egg in the packet.
So when the grant was announced that it said it was for a Southborough History Walk, was that somehow misconstrued by the state?
Um, so the South.
You know what? So I guess we were all calling this a Southborough History Walk. My question is on this, this estimate by VHB of two questions. One is where's, where's the pricing for anything to do with a history walk? And two, I also don't see, you know, you, the first thing that was done over there is that you clear cut a big number of trees. I, I'm not even sure I know how many it is. I mean, it was probably three days worth, three, four days worth of work. I don't see a price for any of that tree cutting on this estimate either. And it, that appears that that was the very first thing that was done in regard to the project. So it seems like it should be at the top of the list.
She's talking.
Later on in your Excel file, there is a bid to take down eight trees, less than twenty-four inches and two trees over the diameter of twenty-four inches. And I think the total cost was seventeen thousand dollars. Now, first of all, I'd really like to know who that tree company is because they're given a really good price on eight, ten trees coming down. Second of all, there's nothing in here telling us how many trees came down or what the expectation was at the point that this estimate was filed in January fourth.
So can you say the last part again?
About January. My overall concern with the budget that was filed with the state in order to get a history walk was two things. One, there's nothing in the budget that includes anything in regard to a history walk. And two, the first thing you did in that area at St. Mark's on their property was to cut down trees. There's no part of this budget that tells us how much that is going to cost. It's not part of this budget. Did that money come from somewhere else? I mean, if it was part of this project to clear that land, to create a pocket park. Seems like it should have been part of the budget to create that.
Um, so it's page, um, twelve of the supplement supplemental packet. So this was the revised bid of two hundred and ninety thousand that we applied for, for the pocket park to the state. So.
You know, I have printouts in front of me and I have like four files open on my computer.
All right.
So is that the one dated January fourth from VHB? Okay. Could you point out in there where it says any pricing for anything related to a history walk? Or anything related to cutting trees? Cause I, I missed it.
So I would have to go back Patty and ask. Um, when VHB was asked to go below the three hundred to apply for the grant? If that was something that they had taken out of the, um, original, um, estimate? And it, you know, I think, I think we always knew that when we went out to bid on this, that we were, like, that we were going to have to supplement some funds outside of, um, the grant money. Yeah. And if you look at the Excel document Patty for the trees removed. So you're talking about, um, I should have put row numbers on this.
Couple of these, then there was a couple in there, wasn't there?
There were. I don't see any of those listed under the park piece of bid number three. So those were not part of, um, of the, the bid results from the park piece.
Oh, wait a minute. No, I saw this on, on one of your Excel files that was part of this pack that I downloaded. Because that's where I got the larger than twenty-four inches. There was eight and less than twenty-four inches. There was two.
Yeah. So if you look at the column related to park piece of bid three, there's, there's no quantity related to the, um, to the.
And what was the date of bid three? Wasn't that in March? Wasn't the date of bid three in March?
No, bid three was from, um, August of twenty-one.
Okay. So it was August, but I'm, I'm asking you about before the grants was given. Where they used the budget provided by the town or how much this project was going to cost. There was nothing in that budget for a history walk or for cutting tree. You're saying that that is part of a budget from Aug. That's eight months after the fact.
I'm sorry, I'm not following the question.
You're saying there's a cost in there for cutting the trees. But that wasn't, it doesn't matter that that wasn't part of the project that was delineated, even though that was the first thing that was done.
So the project was larger than what we applied for with the grant.
So what actually was the two hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the grant used for? Because I know Ms. Galligan said about three months ago that the money was all spent. So what was that used for? If it wasn't used to tear down the trees. It obviously hasn't been used to install the eight thousand dollars worth of milkweed that's going in there or the however many thousands of dollars with of other one gallon perennials. Um, what was the money used?
I mean, I think there were some, there were pre items that needed to be done because the road wasn't there yet to pluck the, the, um, park on top of it. So, um, I can certainly follow up, back up with you Patty and see if I can get some more details around that.
Ms. Galligan has told us, told me that she can't separate out the costs for the project. It's all lumped in together. So if she can't do it, I'm not sure how you can do it. I, I just, I mean, we got two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for a park and a history walk. I don't see a history walk or a park. You're telling me that the budget didn't include cutting the trees, but there's trees cut. The budget wasn't supposed to include moving an intersection because that was supposed to be paid for by state funds of chapter ninety money. So where did the two hundred and ninety thousand dollars get used? I'm sorry. You can move on if you don't have an answer. It's fine.
I mean, I told you, I mean, I mean, oh, God, Marty.
Yeah, the, the, the history walk, by the way, still exists. It's part of the whole project. That's what the walkways are for. Um, certain things had to be dropped out of the project because the, um, um, the amount of the, um, the, the cost that we got back from the bids greatly exceeded the amount that the state grant was going to cover.
Well, if we go back to that map with the big green blotches, it clearly says what the history walk is. It's outlined in another color. My toner cartridge ran out, so it's just printed in black, but clearly shows the history walk. And none of that being done. So I'm not sure how you can say there's still a history.
The entire, the entire object of the project was to connect the historical areas from Main Street up through this area around the, um, old burial ground up to the, um, um, to the town's green. That, that aside from the, the park area and a place for, um, um, meeting space and otherwise is the object of the project. Um, the fact that certain parts of it were dropped out doesn't impact the, the totality of the project, which is that connective tissue between the historical, um, um, part of Main Street up around the old burial ground and down to the green. That was the point of the project from the get-go and it remains the point of the project.
Well, the point of the project was calling it a history walk and where the history walk is delineated on the map. None of that's going to be built. The, the letter from St. Mark's that was approved, uh, sent to the state when they questioned why this was being done in private land. Said that St. Mark's was looking forward to the historic walk.
And they still are.
On March third, on March third, twenty twenty-one, Karen Galligan sent an email to Freddie Gillespie that said, um, a couple of other paragraphs, and then it said, the historic walk was just a concept that was floated to make the grant proposal more attractive. And down below it says, it will be better to connect items that we have plans for, like the garden we're helping you build and the park after they are built, rather than plan a walk in the wrong direction or where it doesn't make sense. The historic walk project is not on the immediate horizon.
That's accurate. All of that is.
That was March, that was March third.
All of that is accurate and is consistent with the, the, the view of the project from the get-go. And the idea of, of using that connective tissue for the history walk remains, but we couldn't afford everything.
And the application also called for sidewalks on eighty-five and St. Mark's Street and a gathering area adjacent to the library and the old burial ground. It wasn't just specific to a history walk. There were other components to what the project, uh, the description of the project entail.
Can I, can I just ask you a side, another question about this application that was sent? Can I just ask you a side, another question about this application that was sent into the state to get a grant for a history walk? If you look at page seven of. I think it's the original packet supplement that I can't tell. It says 426.22 packet supplement. I'm looking at exhibit A. Number three. The question on the application says, have you previously received a mass DOT shared streets and spaces grant? And Karen Gallagher answered, yes. If yes, has the municipality completed the project and spent the grant in full? And she said, yes. Could you tell me what was the previous shared streets and spaces grant the town received?
Yeah, that was, I don't have the amounts, Ms. Fiore, but that was a grant that was. I believe received by the EDC, which provided some flower boxes. And sitting areas and that, which were located downtown. I believe it also provided some of the outdoor. Tents and heaters that the town rented out to some of the local restaurants to enable them to do outdoor seating during the pandemic.
Do you know the amount of that grant? For the date?
Uh, I don't, but if this goes on a little bit longer, I can probably find it while we're talking.
You can just let me know, that's fine.
All right, Mr. Purple will get that answer for you.
I personally think that there's too many questions involved in this project, too few answers. Or explanatory answers from the DPW. And some dising, what I feel is disingenuous information given to the state. For this to proceed without questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Purple will get that. You have it?
Yeah, the amount of the grant was $24,500.
$24,500.
Do you have a date on that?
Getting it.
Yeah, the, the press release was issued on September 28th of 2020. So. Probably sometime in the month of September.
Okay, great, it's a cool thing.
Okay, thank you. Much appreciated. We have one other hand. Ms. Dean's Row.
Hi there. I have one quick question, it won't take long. If the object of the project was, as Mr. Healy stated, a history walk. And that is pretty clear in the grant application. The 290 has been spent, but the object of the project is still on the distant horizon. And the money has been spent elsewhere on other. I guess supplemental components. Was there any reporting done to Mastot? Were they informed that the object of the project was not going to be completed with their $290,000?
So. I don't know if it's in the package. So Mastot was aware that the first bid came in higher than. Was anticipated and that we were going to. I'm just. That we. It was. So, so the, the state has been aware every time we've gone backwards a bit on this. And they're aware of the challenges that we had with this. And so they, they are aware there were, there were some plug and play items that had to be shifted and some preliminary work that needed to be done. So that the final pieces could be incorporated in that after the December date.
That's good. I'm a little confused also about if it's the object of the project, why it, it wasn't bid out. Like all of the components, why no one came back to the historical commission and asked, you know, what. What it would compose of or ask for input, what would, you know, how many signs would we like? What would, where would we like them placed? If none of that information was detailed. In the budget or any bids. I guess I'm just a bit confused why that was the first thing to be dropped and not even. Included in the budget if it was the object of the project, which is contrary to what Ms. Gallagher said in her email, but.
No, I'm sorry, Ms. Dean's Row, do you mind stating your name and address for the record?
Rebecca Dean's Row, 17 Harris Drive.
Thank you.
But I don't think that confusion will be solved tonight, so I'm just gonna leave that as a comment.
Thank you. Much appreciated. All right. At this point then, we're gonna move on to item C, which is Conservation Commission interviews. We could bring over Ms. Zulik, I hope I'm not mispronouncing that. Do this, I would bring them over, or are we just?
Uh, we can bring them over.
Hi, good evening, welcome. Thank you so much for hanging around. We're always thankful when you, when you volunteer step forward. If you want to just take a few seconds, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you have an interest in serving on the Conservation Commission. We'll open it up to the board for some questions.
Great, I'll get started. My name is Liz Zulik. Some quick information, I work at Northeastern University, I'm a faculty member there. I'm a molecular biologist by training, I have my PhD from Boston University and a master's in public health and environmental health, also from Boston University. I moved to Southborough about a year ago. I don't know if I have to state my address for record, so Three Hidden Meadow Lane is where I live in Southborough. And I wanted to get involved in the community and I went to the website and took a look around at all the different options to volunteer. And to get involved and the Conservation Commission was something that caught my eye, given my background in environmental health and. My, I think, impassioned in general for conservation and taking care of the environment. And so I, I did some background research with. My uncle who serves in his town in New Hampshire and I met with different members of the committee and Melissa. And I've decided. That I think I want to do this, so I'm going for it.
Wonderful, that's great, thank you so much. And I will, before I open it up to the board, I will just say that Melissa sent a letter, you know, the commission was very supportive of your appointment. So again, thank you for stepping forward, it's always great, welcome to town. Being here only a year, we commend you for that. We'll, we'll open it up to the board, Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you. Hi, nice to meet you.
Hi.
Thanks for applying. Did you say you have a degree in public health?
Yes.
Oh, excellent, so I will be sure to keep your email on file for any. Health, health department questions that I have. But it sounds like you have a great background for Conservation Commission. You seem to think you have a lot of energy, so I look forward to your appointment. Thanks to me, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Stivers.
Thank you, welcome Liz, delighted to have you volunteer for this. Are there any particular issues that you're interested in focusing on with the Conservation Commission at this point?
Um, I think in general, protection of conservation land and ensuring that there's public access to that space and. That we continue to have conservation land in town is important to me. Besides that, also ensuring that we bring in new developments and building in town that we are being, you know, taking into account. The surrounding environment and ensuring that we are not only meeting kind of the standards, but also ensuring that we're. Creating a community that, you know, we are creating a community that we all want to live in. And then is also at the same time protecting our natural resources.
And in striking that balance is obviously the ongoing challenge for CONCON and other missions. So they're a great group, I, I know you'd be happy working with them, they do a wonderful service for the town, so thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Mr. Dennington.
Hi, thank you, Liz. I really appreciate your interest and I look forward to your work.
Wonderful.
Thanks, Lisa. Hi, Ms. Zulik, am I saying it right?
Zulik, yeah.
Zulik, hi, nice to meet you. What do you teach at Northeastern?
Um, so I'm a molecular biologist by training, so I, I tend to teach cell biology, molecular biology, biochemistry, but. I am more of an administrator now, so I spend. I'm the associate dean for research, innovation, development, entrepreneurship. And I oversee our undergraduate degree completion programs in the College of Professional Studies.
Wow, cool, sounds very interesting. And beware, Ms. Malinowski, I, I saw from here, her ears perk up when you said public health, she will get her hooks into you. But again, terrific background for anything environmental, scientific, and. I think we're lucky to have you, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna do, conduct a, just a second interview and then we'll take a position and a vote for both of you. So, Ms. Zulik, if you just hang out with us, and again, thank you for applying. Would you bring over Mr. Farrington? Oh, there we go. Hi, good evening, welcome, thank you for, again, for volunteering, much appreciated. Forward to when we can actually see you in person. Same question, if you just want to take a minute and, and tell us a little bit about yourself, your interest in the Conservation Commission and your background, and we'll open it.
Sure, Kevin, my name is Kevin Farrington, I live at 58 Flag Road. Lived in town for 26 plus years, but this is my first time actually volunteering for a board. So a little nervous, but it'll be fine. We'll see how it goes. My background is not in professional health, so I want to make that clear for Ms. Malinowski that. You know, she's not gonna get anything from me that's useful. But my background is in, in engineering degree from the University of Connecticut. Since then, I've been doing computer work, software engineering. Currently work as a software architect for Waters Corporation down in Milford. I started there under the pandemic and been to the office, I think, three or four times, but mostly I work still a lot of the house here. And so I had time, needed to get out of the house and Conservation Commission seemed like a good idea. I had been approached a couple of years ago by one of the members who was looking to fill a position. And the position had been filled before I even got my act together, got my form in. So I've been keeping my eye on it for a while and. The meetings are very well run, it seems like a really good group and seems like it would be a, a good. Committee to join.
Wonderful, thank you so much, thank you for, for volunteering. You know, it, it doesn't matter how long you've been in town, there's always opportunities for people, so thank you for stepping forward. I will open it up, we'll start with Mr. Healy this time.
Hi, Mr. Farrington, nice to meet you. Have you watched some of the Conservation Commission meetings?
I have, I've been in person in the audience for a few of them, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're almost as long as ours.
Some of them can go pretty long, but yes.
But no, you, you, again, as with Ms. Zulik, you seem to have a background that, that. That fits this and. I, I think you would enjoy a tenure on the board, so I don't have any questions for you, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Stivers.
Hey, Kevin, good to see you, thanks for volunteering. I'll ask you the same question I asked your predecessor here, any specific issues that you are eager to focus on?
A couple, I mean, so if you look at Southborough, a quarter of land area is either water or land meant to protect the water with the Sudbury River and the reservoir system and the open channel. And so preserving that, it's kind of what makes Southborough magical. Then you pile on top of that Chestnut Hill Farm, Breckenacille and all the other responsibilities of the committee. And even going so far as to see, you know, the dump starting to get cleaned up down there. I think that's gonna be exciting to get that restored, so.
Good, and again, it's a great group and I'm sure you'll enjoy that and make a lot of contribution to it, so thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Mr. Dennington.
Hi, Kevin, good to see you again. Sentiments of my fellow board members that I appreciate your stepping up and I think will make a valuable contribution.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Mr. Farrington. I also appreciate engineers and I will definitely keep you in mind if I have any engineering questions that come up. I don't have any further questions, but it sounds like you've done your homework and this would be a good fit for you, so I look forward to your appointment.
Great, so, and again, thank you for stepping forward and, and it's, it's always great when Chelsea can put you on her list as well, so. So I think with what's before us, I think it's pretty, pretty obvious the board is, is very supportive of both of your appointments. There's two appointments, one for an unexpired term, well, she both are, 6/30/23 and 6/30/24. So we're just.
Which are both effective now, I thought one was effective 6/30.
Isn't there two openings currently?
Two openings now, there is another resignation coming effective the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So two now.
Yeah, two now and, and one later, so we just need to decide where we want to potentially appoint each two. I would offer a suggestion that. To give Ms. Zulik the opportunity to participate and be a member of the Conservation Commission and then certainly. Do that for the term ending 6/30/23, she can get a good idea of the town and how things work and hopefully she's gonna absolutely love it and want to re-up. At the end of 23 and Mr. Farrington, I, I think has a pretty good understanding as well, and I think he'd be a good fit through 6/30/24. I'm seeing shavings of heads.
I will soon move.
Okay. Okay, we'll call because Mr. Healy is not here, Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
Mr. Healy.
Hi.
Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Dennington.
Hi.
And Ms. Brashia, hi, thank you both, welcome to serving the town, we appreciate it, you'll be getting a nice little letter, kind of just giving you some instructions and we look forward to serving. So again, thank you for stepping forward and thank you for hanging around.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next up is presentations or discussions, I guess I should say, tell me the articles, Ms. Fiore. If we can bring her over. She has her hand raised, but we're gonna bring her over anyway. Ms. Zulik is still hanging around, we appreciate it.
I was just gonna say, like, am I allowed to go now?
All set, we just have a transfer due yet, you're all set.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Fiore, there you are, if you want to start.
I actually have, I have to be in person, oh my God, it's almost like being in person.
So if you would just want to just start with article 33, just give us a general overview, we'll open it up to the board for any questions that they may have.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. You know, look, my whole goal with the citizen petition is to ensure accountability and transparency. In our local government and the running of this town and specifically within Department of Public Works. These are a couple of things I think seem to be sorely missing and needed and wanted. You know, if you have a better suggestion how to get that done, other than the town voting on this at town meeting, I am all ears. I know that there is a Public Works Planning Board in place. It's obviously uninterested and ineffective, having not met in more than two years and with no intention to meet. Given the fact that the Department of Public Works has been in such question over the past year. And with questions not being answered, frankly. I think it's appalling if there is a board that is in place to oversee this, that it is obviously not doing its job. If you think that is the board that should be in place to do this, then I think that every single member on that needs to be replaced. With people who are interested in providing or ensuring that oversight and transparency. That's it? Very simple.
So. Just for the public awareness, the Public Works Planning Board is not appointed by the Board of Selectment, it's appointed by the moderator and I believe two members of planning, planning board appoints two members as well. Is that correct? Sam is actually.
I happen to be on that board, Ms. Fiore.
When was the last time you met, Mr. Stivers?
A long time, and I substantially agree with your comments, although I'm one vote there and I would love.
A long time, and I substantially agree with your comments, although I'm one vote there, and I would love to find other members to actually share my feelings.
And that would be great. If you have an interest in meeting and moving forward to do something, like I said, my simple goal is to create and ensure transparency and accountability within this government and the Department of Public Works. Whatever it takes to get that done, I am abhorred with. This is the only way that I saw at that time to get that done. Because nobody was really listening nor answering questions. I mean, how many times have I sent emails to Karen Gallagher asking for an itemization of one simple part, one simple project, and how much that project cost? And she's unable to provide that. I mean, I don't think that's the way that businesses run.
Let's see.
Again, I think it's pretty clear and pretty simple what is needed to happen here.
We'll open it up to the rest of the board. Ms. Zulik.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Fiore, for bringing this word. I completely understand what you're looking to do, and I commend you for bringing this forward. I have a few thoughts on it. One is that this is retrospective, and I think that.
What do you mean by that? I'm sorry. What do you mean by that?
Because this is a report on what was spent, not how it's going to be spent. So, this is after the monies have been expended. And I think the position that this board took a month ago, six weeks ago, was to incorporate a process where all of the road maintenance money would be reviewed and vetted by Capitol prior to sign-off by the Select Board, and actually having the individual roads presented multiple times prior to it going up to bid. So, I don't necessarily have an issue if advisory, I don't think, I don't think we've heard advisory's position on this, because I think you're going before them this week. I don't necessarily have an issue with a retrospective look at this, and if advisory is interested in doing it, I don't have an issue with that either. I just, I think that there's more value in looking at it upfront and understanding, you know, what a three-year accumulation of our road money is going to from a public benefit. Go ahead.
I think that's great. That's great. It's good to have accountability and understanding upfront of how the money is being spent. I had assumed that was being done on all the current road projects by the Department of Public Works and by the Board of Selectmen who had approved that. That does not appear to be the case. So, I think it's, both parts are needed. You know, more understanding and control over how the money, how the taxpayer money is spent and on what projects, and to follow that up, accountability for those projects, and not just, I'm not just talking about a road. I mean, there's a lot of the things, there's a lot of things that DPW does. We have a very large budget for that department. We have no idea where that money is going. And you know what? This probably should be an issue for all of the departments that do not have something in place already that do have that kind of a substantial budget. So, I think both parts are needed. Look at it from the beginning. Make sure everyone agrees with where that money is being spent, if it's being spent in the correct ways so that it isn't under the jurisdiction of just one person, and then do a follow-up so that there is accountability that is maintained as the projects move forward, and that that accountability is to the taxpayers saying, this is how your money was spent, and it was spent justly. So, both parts. I agree. Great. How do we do that? So, what's the suggestion? How do we do that? Because I don't think just putting roads to be advised by Capitol Planning is the solving and all be all.
So, so I think there's a few components to it. There's the quarterly financial reports that we started. This is our second year doing them. And I happen to be the Selectman rep that sits with the finance team on a quarterly basis, and I go through year-to-date actual expenditures compared to budget, line by line. And we review, we've expanded our scope of that to include more. If you, I would be more than happy to take any feedback or suggestions for more information to be included in that. We included a ton. We put out probably more information than people want to look at, but I just, I, you know, I think the more access people have to information, the better. So, that's one thing that's done. I think, you know, incorporating advisory into that process is important, and, you know, their review at year-end at their town meeting report is important as well. So, and I also think from a Capitol perspective in terms of projects, you know, we just signed off on them doing roads, but any sort of Capitol project, as you'll see in the new article at town meeting to make them a permanent committee, gives oversight to a lot of what you're speaking to. So, I think we have a few different components, but I think if there's other things that you think we're missing, I think I'm all ears on how we can make the process more transparent and better for the public to understand if it's, if there's almost too much information, you think it should be pared down, or we should be focusing on different things. You know, I'm open to changing that process, and I know the finance team is willing to be flexible.
I don't think that, I don't think it's too much, necessarily too much information, and I think it's great that you want to move to a more accountable government. The problem is that you're saying, okay, I'm gonna give you a line-by-line budget. The kind of aspect of that is that Karen Gallagher can only provide you with a line-by-line budget. So, she's throwing in road paving for, you know, three different projects. She's throwing in, you know, when she says, here's my line item of how much we're gonna spend this year out of Chapter 90 money for, I don't know, the underpavement. She's including moving the road at St. Mark's Street. She's including down by the CSX crossing. I want to know it by project. If you're telling me you're gonna do a project of paving Parkerville Road, I want to know how much that costs. If you're telling me you're gonna do a project of moving an intersection at St. Mark's Street, I want to know how much that project costs. And that's where the decision should be made, is that $2 million to move an intersection at St. Mark's Street more valuable to the taxpayers of this town than paving Parkerville Road, which has school buses going on it six times a day? But we don't get that information, because nothing is accountable by a project base.
Sorry. So, when I was addressing the line-by-line, I was talking about operational budgets, not road maintenance or road projects. That would all be covered under what we just agreed to. So, if there's other types of projects that you think that were missing, and you could certainly reach out to me if, you know, you think of anything after this, then, you know, I'm more than happy to incorporate that.
So, is any of that being put in place, what you're trying to put in place, is that going to give the taxpayers a, you know, a look at a project cost?
Yes.
Because that's. Okay. I didn't, I don't remember hearing that as an intent. I just know that it's also not, it's not in any of the thought process now. It's not in any process within the DPW now to provide that.
So, that, so, and I can get you the, the date that we voted on this, Patty, and the minute to look at when we talked about how this process would work, which would be from prior to going out to bid and having the estimates of what we think it's gonna cost by road, and then actually getting the bids back and evaluated if it fits within the road maintenance money in Chapter 90 and everything else that falls into funding from road maintenance. So, I'm happy to, to loop back with you on if, if that's the process that you would expect to see going forward.
Um, like I said, all I'm looking for is transparency and accountability. Whatever's gonna create that and ensure that, I'm all for. I just haven't seen it happen. I've lived in this town since 1989. So, you know, it's kind of about time something happens, right? So, what do you suggest I do? I have a citizen's petition that's going before town meeting. You're telling me you're gonna do this. I don't need to continue with this because you have it under control. What do you suggest? Do I just believe you?
So, I think, from my perspective at least, I think, I think you accomplished what you were looking for. I mean, I would encourage you to still talk to advisory and see if they want to, you know, have this memorialized in terms of a report. I think what I'm saying to you is that there's a process, you know, a process in place that this board has already signed off on and is committed to, and I think you have a Capitol Planning Committee who is coming forward to become a permanent committee and is looking to be ingrained in the process. So, that's what I'm telling you, you know.
So, accountability is generally after the fact. You know, there's planning, there's accountability. So, you're talking about the first part, the planning, and making sure that the money that is put in place or is available is programmed to be spent in the right way. I guess I still want the insurance somehow, assurance somehow, that the accountability piece is gonna be put in place. And I'm not sure I've heard that. And I think that accountability piece comes by this report from the DPW outlining not just giving me, like, what I see in the town warrant, which, you know, frankly, is a bunch of baloney, you know, malarkey, whatever the word is, that it's not telling me anything. It's just telling me what they want me to pay in my taxes to cover that. It's not telling me the project and how much those projects cost.
So, if you're specifically talking about road projects, I think the expectation is, and Lisa's, I don't want to, I keep talking about Capitol Planning, and Lisa's on Capitol Planning, but I don't want to put words in your mouth, but my expectation is that if Capitol Planning is gonna sign off and make a recommendation on a project, given their new permanency in the town by law and the project oversight that they are looking for out of that bylaw, my understanding is that it will be soup to nuts, and that it, I mean, we more talked about being transparent on the, on the front side, but my assumption and expectation is that it will be followed through until completion. I agree.
Okay, so I heard a lot of ifs in there. One, if the article is approved, that makes them a standing committee versus an ad hoc committee. If they choose to move forward on what that means for that standing committee, and if they decide that in the end they want to get that accountability from this department. Here's my suggestion.
Add it to that.
What? There's a lot of if. Well, but there, there's a lot of ifs, right? Nothing is set in stone, because we have town meeting where we have a whole bunch of people that get to vote. So, here's my suggestion. Let's approve some form of definitive accountability for the DPW, which is, if you want to say it's after the fact, that it is just the accountability portion, that it is set in stone that the DPW has to provide this accountability, whether it be to advisory or to the town accountant or to whomever, that is then provided to the taxpaying residents, that's fine. I don't need it to go further. And if in two years after having that accountability in place, that we are getting those answers from the DPW that we want and that it is running smoothly, and then at that point, if the warrant goes through and Capitol becomes a standing committee, and if they choose to do it that way, and if they choose to follow up, we can divest of it and absorb it into Capitol Planning. But in the meantime, this would give some assurance that it will happen. I think that's a fair compromise.
If I could just jump in. So, Patty, in the new Capitol article, it talks about project oversight. It's, it says, "In the absence of a formal building committee for a specific item contained in the Capitol article, the CIPC will have at least one member selected to formally collaborate with the project sponsor, regularly report on the progress. Concerns about project status, budget, or overall management will be brought back to the full CIPC for formal discussion and proposed action. If any elected board decides to have a separate building committee for any specific project, then at least one member, but not more than two, will be appointed." And that, that falls in with the, what Chelsea had said, oversight, even at the front end from Capitol. I think through the warrant and making it a standalone committee, you're getting the oversight that you're looking for, both at the front and the back end.
If the warrant is approved.
So, you know what, Patty? I'm just gonna pull up their current ad hoc charge.
I did actually look that up recently, but it's probably been about three weeks, though.
So.
So, is the problem with creating too much oversight and too much accountability?
Is there? No.
Yeah, no, I'm asking. So, then why wouldn't you just agree to support this article?
My opening comment is I don't have an issue with this. I just wanted you to, I mean, I don't have an issue with this, because I think we're currently already doing it. I have no issue with you bringing it forward and talking to advisory about it. I don't.
Well, I would like to see the support of the Board of Select, or the Select Board, sorry, in support of this, just to prove that you believe in accountability and ensuring that that's gonna happen. I don't think that, even if it duplicates some of the effort in the first year, that the Capitol Planning new standing committee, should the article be passed, is also going to create. I don't see that could be possibly a bad thing to demand too much accountability.
Okay. Patty, I'm gonna continue through the rest of the board. Okay. Chelsea, did you have anything? No? Okay, no. Mr. Stivers.
Thanks. I certainly am a fan of accountability, and I also think frankly that you can't have too much oversight. If we've got a system in place that provides an appropriate amount of oversight, we don't need much of the layers of that. I've followed the Capitol Planning Committee pretty closely for some time now. I think they do outstanding work. They've got very capable people there who I think will get to the bottom of the kind of concern that you are expressing here, and I think it's important to have accountability. I think it's important to have clear understanding on a project-by-project basis, which is the way that committee tends to operate. So, I'm very confident that with their current charge, and hopefully with the approval of town meeting, to make it a permanent committee, that they'll be able to deliver on that accountability and planning function without the additional layer here that you're proposing. So, I'm not supportive of this article, because I think we've now positioned ourselves to get what you're looking for in a different way. So, I guess I have confidence of that. No way to prove that, or time will tell, I guess, but I think they are likely to be able to deliver what you're talking about. So, that's my two cents worth of that. But again, clearly, you have rights as citizens to put the petition in and see what town meeting says. They may approve, and that's fine, too. That's it for me.
Mr. Dennington.
I think Mr. Stivers stated it pretty well. I'd like to see how the process goes the next fiscal year with a review by the Capitol Planning Committee. Just some comments, I would say, that are just constructive about your article. You mentioned, I'm looking for a report during the previous calendar year, and usually the reviews are doing fiscal year rather than calendar year, so I just give that to you for your consideration. And, you know, one thing which is unclear to me from this article, because it's talking about giving an opinion to the hall, which is the town meeting, is to say oral presentation, or is this a written presentation? oral presentation, or is this a written presentation? I mean, a written annual report, which is done. So if it doesn't matter, it sounds like you would be satisfied with it. And so you haven't appeared before. You're scheduled to appear for advisory committee on this soon?
Thursday.
Okay.
I've spoken with Kathy Cox, but yeah, Thursday.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Healy.
I'm good. I generally agree with Mr. Dennington and Mr. Stivers on this, and I do not support the article.
All right. Thank you. And I appreciate, as Chelsea said, the looking for an additional level of oversight. And I think we're working towards that, Patty, through the Capitol Committee. As Chelsea said, certainly as a citizen petition, you can bring this forward. But I completely agree with Mr. Stivers that, you know, we have to give the process that we put in place an opportunity to work.
The currently isn't a process in place.
Well, with the Capitol Committee, I'd also be interested to hear what advisory says on Thursday as well. I actually would be interested if advisory would review like the final report from Capitol. I think that would be, that would be your added layer of oversight. And then, you know, within that fiscal year, I think that would be a good, a good way to incorporate it into like their near end. I agree.
You know, I'm very happy to see, very happy to see movement forward on this topic. And, you know, whatever spurred it, whether it was this, you know, issue at Saint Marks or whatever, I'm happy to see movement forward that I'm not the only one that sees a need for accountability and transparency. So like I said, that's the whole goal. Whatever is going to accomplish that is in the best interest of all, in my opinion.
All right. Thank you. Article thirty four, if you want to just again touch on that briefly. I know you had brought an article forward prior and, yeah, so.
So the previous article, as I'm sure you're all aware, was just to reinvigorate a pilot committee that was already on the books for the town of Southborough that was passed at town meeting in two thousand and nineteen. And I mean, let's just admit it was then kind of slow walked and didn't really accomplish anything. So the basic change here is that this is to create a standing committee versus an ad hoc committee. Because like I said, I've lived in this town since nineteen eighty nine. Nothing has been accomplished in regard to pilot money and getting more pilot money. You know, when I started my research in two thousand and nineteen for that presentation, I went back to the pilot payments from the schools as far back as two thousand and eleven. And in two thousand and eleven, Fay School contributed ten thousand dollars to the town of Southborough. And in two thousand and twelve, Fay School contributed ten thousand dollars. In two thousand and thirteen, Fay School contributed ten thousand dollars. Think you're seeing where I'm going here, right? Because you know, in two thousand and nineteen, Fay School contributed ten thousand dollars. In two thousand and twenty, ten thousand dollars. In two thousand and twenty-one, ten thousand dollars. I've lived in this house, this town since nineteen eighty nine. My taxes have not stayed the same since two thousand and eleven. I think it's very unfair of the fact that private schools do not support the services of this town that they use. And I don't like the fact that they continued by residential property, which take those properties off of the tax rolls, which means that the remaining taxpaying citizens are then covering for those properties which those schools have purchased. Since the Board of Selectmen at all have chosen not to pursue this in a sufficient manner over the thirty years that I've lived here. I think that the only way to make sure that there is some potential progress on this is to make it a standing committee versus an ad hoc. And if you noticed in my thing, I mean, I'm not just talking about going to a CEO of a school and negotiating. I think there's a lot of work to be done. I mean, I did a lot of research in two thousand and nineteen to talk to town accountants and administrators in other towns to find out how they were dealing with their private schools and what kind of funding they had from them. And I talked to our Congress office, Congresswoman's office in regard to what, you know, I see is kind of a loophole in the tax revenue code. And there's a lot of things that need to be examined. It's not just a matter of walking across the street and trying to talk to somebody with the school. And I think that requires a standing committee that is, you know, educated and capable and willing to pursue it.
Right. Thank you. I have a few questions. Mr. Healy.
I don't support the article.
I guess that, is there an explanation?
I could, I, I, I think that the article is based on wishing the law were different than it is, and it's not. And our creating a standing committee is not going to change the law. And so.
Didn't say it was going to change the law.
Well, then, then the, 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 the standing committee is not going to have any information that the Board of Selectmen already doesn't have based on review of what the rights of the town are, which are quite frankly limited when it comes to nonprofits, what the rights of nonprofits are. I can tell you that, I mean, I've had what I think are very productive conversations with both Saint Marks and Fay over the last several years. And I think your numbers are wrong. They're certainly wrong for this year in terms of the amounts of money that the both of those institutions are going to be contributing.
I didn't tell you this year. I only quoted up to twenty twenty-one.
You didn't talk about Saint Marks for twenty twenty-one, where their number, I think, almost tripled. And Fay's number this, this year is going to go up significantly as well. As a result of not browbeating them, but having discussions with them and understanding what their legal rights are and how they fit into the, the, the rights that the town can execute. So that's why I don't support the article. I don't think it's a good idea. I think it's a bad message. So that's my position.
Can I just make a couple of tiny comments in regard to that? So what I do have so far for twenty twenty-two is, okay. Okay, what I do have for twenty twenty-two is that there's going to be a forty thousand dollar year fund for the fire department to be purchased in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And it says Saint Marks and Fay will split evenly, forty thousand dollars. So it doesn't tell me whether that's to be paid in one year. I wasn't, that wasn't part of the information. I know in the past what Fay School has done in regard to the, the fire truck that they agreed to pay a hundred thousand dollars for, but they spread that payment out in ten thousand dollar payments over ten years. So I'm not sure that we've seen a commitment of whether that's going to be twenty thousand dollars in one year or ten thousand dollars in each of two years. In regard to Saint Marks, it says that Saint Marks is going to do half of that, which is twenty thousand dollars. And then they're going to be contributing toward defibrillators, which is eighteen thousand two hundred dollars. So that appears to be thirty eight thousand dollars in payment that is expected in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. In fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
What, can I stop you? Again, your numbers are wrong, Ms. Fiore. And it's, it is, Saint Marks is contributing forty five thousand dollars or forty seven thousand dollars in addition to that. In fact, I think it's already contributed for fiscal year twenty-two.
This is given to me by the town accountant a couple of days ago.
I, I, I don't know what you have in front of you. I'm just telling you what the commitment was from the, from the institution. And again, but, but Ms. Fiore, they are, those are contributions. I don't think you pay more than you're required to by law for your, in your taxes, do you? Do you pay more? Well, do you? You don't. The answer is you don't. They pay more than they're required to in taxes. There are, there are private, excuse me, ma'am, I let you talk. There are private institutions all over the Commonwealth of Massachusetts who pay nothing, pay zero. And that because, and they don't pay anything because they're not required to pay anything. And the institutions in towns or cities that pay, for the most part, that is based on the development of a constructive relationship between the town and those institutions. That's what I've tried to accomplish, and I think I have accomplished over the last several years. And as a result, if you go back twenty, thirty years, the largest contributions made by either of those institutions that you focused on have been in the last two years. And I think that will continue because of the, the the commitment that the town has made to those institutions and that the institutions have made to the town to look at it from a mutually beneficial standpoint, not we want more. Because again, you're not paying more in taxes than you're required to. Those institutions are. That's why I say what you want to do is change the law. You can't change the law unless you go to the legislature. And that, with the law changes, that's fine. But the law is that they're not required to pay a thing, and they pay more than that.
I'm going to move this back, excuse me, Patty, I'm going to move this back to the article before us. So Mr. Healy is made very clear his position on what's before us and whether he supports it or not. I, I have some concerns relative to the makeup potentially of the committee. And again,
Sure.
I also am not supportive of the article as written. Advisory can't sit on a, on a standalone committee. It can only serve on an ad hoc committee. And I don't know whether this committee outside of one potentially appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and I could be wrong, but I have a concern relative to a committee that could be established by an elected official or any elected board, which could be the planning board, it could be the Board of Health, with the objective of establishing a formal agreement.
My understanding was that any, any standing committee had to be under the jurisprudence of an elected official or elected fore.
Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Just with, my concern is with, with any elected board creating a committee that can negotiate on behalf of the town. And, and Mark, keep me honest here, I don't believe anyone other than the Board of Selectmen has the authority to enter into a agreement such as that. So those are my concerns. And again, the makeup, I don't know what the Council on Aging specifically is going to bring to, you know, a negotiation. So be it. So those are my concerns, Patty. I appreciate, you know, your continued concern, but I'm concerned about the makeup and I'm concerned whether any elected board other than the Board of Selectmen can negotiate on behalf of.
I don't have a problem altering the makeup. I mean, I didn't, I guess I didn't know about the issue with advisory at the time. I've been since told. So I mean, I'm more than happy to make a amendment on the floor before the presentation. That's fine. I mean, you know, if you would prefer that instead of a person from advisory on it, a person from the select board be on it, that's fine. I don't have a problem.
The bigger issue for me is a town official, which could be the clerk, creating a committee to negotiate on behalf of town. That's my concern. So I, I think there's some challenges here, just from my standpoint, and I, I can't support it as written. I'll certainly open it up.
What would need to change? What would need to change in order for it to be supported?
Well, a lot of what's written in here. And again, I think I agree with, with, with Mr. Healy said as well that the, the law is very specific. We can certainly have a conversation, and I think Mr. Healy's been having those conversations. I don't know that I think a pilot committee will accomplish what you're trying to do. That's again, just my, my two cents for some of the reasons I stated.
Well, we haven't been successful in the way things have been going for, for decades. So it seems as though it's time to change something, to make it successful.
So you feel strongly that this committee can potentially go to the schools and make them do something they're not required to do. And again, I'm not saying conversations shouldn't take place. Conversations do take place. I'm not saying that at all.
I'm not going to make anybody do anything. And I think the last item on the agenda is to go to the school. I think that there is significant study that is needed to talk to other towns. You know, okay, you know, you have a relationship with this private schools in your town. How did you achieve that? Does it work for both sides? I mean, I talked to one town in two thousand and nineteen where they basically, it was the town accountant told me that they have an understanding with the private schools, that, or the private school, that any residential property that's purchased is just kept on the tax rolls. They don't make a pilot payment. But what the town gets is the guarantee of that tax income on the residential property, not on any of the academic building, because that's obviously nonprofit. But they, and if the taxes for the normal citizen go up, then the taxes or pilot payment, whatever you want to say, to the school go up. There, there's a lot of questions in there that I don't think have been looked at of, like I said, talking to these other towns, looking at some of the issues. It's not just going in and demanding more money from a school. I mean, I think you have to appeal to their fairness and, and morality by understanding how much money of my taxpayer dollars are being spent in services to that nonprofit. And I understand they don't have to do it. God knows, we heard that from Fay. They said, we don't have to, and therefore we won't.
Patty, I'm going to open it up to the rest of the board. Those were just some of my initial comments on this. And again, I appreciate you bringing it. Ms. Melonowski.
Thank you. And thank you again for bringing this one forward. I guess I, I view the process a little bit differently. And I think, I think we've, we've headed in the right direction with building on that partnership, and I hope we continue to. And I think, you know, with some of the capital items that have been able to come off the, the tax roll, I think that's been a success. And I'd like to continue down that path. I, I just, I'm not sure that putting it, and I, and I get your research part, and I think that that having information on how other things work, if we're not recreating the wheel, is helpful. I just don't know that creating a committee like this is, is, that I'm ready to do something like that and not continue with, in building on what we've been able to do already. I guess that's where I'm at.
Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. And I guess I'm less focused, Patty, on the details as, as of the concept. And it seems to me that clearly, you know, we've had several runs at this over the years. And I think that, frankly, Mr. Healy has done an excellent job in terms of making progress, but it has been very little progress previously. And it seems to me that they look at the essence of the warrant article. The group is charged with engaging in discussions, which doesn't have a lot of teeth in terms of ability to push people to do something they're not required to do by law. I guess my opinion is that it is much more effective to build a relationship on a one-on-one basis or individual basis as opposed to having a committee make it a group effort. I think that's less effective in this kind of circumstance. It seems to me that we have a greater chance of succeeding in terms of getting a reasonable amount of pilot payment. Reasonable is certainly. in terms of getting a reasonable amount of pilot payment. Reasonable is certainly, uh, given the history of Massachusetts, it's far from, you know, full value or even a substantial portion of full value. And I think that we've been making decent progress and I think that's the way we need to go forward. The committee in my view complicates that process. So I'm therefore not supportive of the article conception.
So what, what about if I propose a compromise? Um, Mr. Haley isn't going to be with the select board, um, going forward, the way I understand it. So that will, that person discussing with the schools is going to have to be replaced. So what if the representative, instead of advisory, the representative from the select board was then the person that did the actual talking to the, the school, if that's your preference, but that the board is the one that gathers all the information. I mean, for God's sakes, I see how long your meetings go. I see how many different committees you're supposed to sit on. To think that a committee of eight people isn't going to have more time and effort to examine and study this one topic is just unrealistic. So what if we compromise by saying, okay, that's what this board is gonna do, this committee is going to do, sorry. They're the ones that are gonna spend all the time, do the research, talk them on themselves with this member of the select board and then this, the, the member from the select board can go be the one to make the presentation to the school. If they want to invite other people, they can do that.
I, I guess I, I, I did have a fundamental difference of view on this, Patty. My view is that research is not gonna win the day here. I think the town has done research historically. I've done research, you've done research on the concept. And there are a lot of different ways people approach this out here. And it's not, I think, gonna be successful going into, uh, any of these nonprofits with a, you know, 53-page PowerPoint presentation that says, here's the research, here's what everybody else is doing. Therefore, here's what you need to do, as much as sitting down with people on a one-on-one basis, using, as I think you referred to, moral persuasion here to say, let's figure out how you can do the right thing and we can support you as you do the right thing.
But Sam, that's what I'm saying, the, the, the committee is gonna do for you is they're gonna talk to 30 different towns across the state, find out the best solution for how one of these towns achieved the best goal. And then Southborough can formulate its plan of action based on what has been most successful.
I think, I think we already know a lot of that from prior research on, on the topic. So maybe, maybe, you know, I'm wrong on it. I don't know. But my view is that, that we have a lot more chance of success with the personal approach as Mr. Healy has done historically and hopefully another member of the select board which is going forward to continue that momentum that we built here. So again, honest difference of opinion, reasonable people can agree, disagree reasonably on things. No way I can prove my view is right. We can prove her view is right at this point, but, uh, I guess it's my call in terms of, of where I think we need to focus and it's not to support this particular article. So I appreciate your attention. I think we wanna go in the same direction, but just how we get there is.
I don't think it's been very successful, so I'm looking for a new solution.
Um, Marty, did you want to add something before I go to Andrew? Are you good?
I, just very quickly, the idea that, that, um, I mean, a, a committee, I suppose conceivably could do more research than I did on this topic. Um, but it'd be pretty hard. Um, the approach I came up with wasn't, um, it was based entirely on research that I did. That's why I can tell you, you probably could name any community in Massachusetts that has a private school and I could tell you what their approach was. Whether or not they generated a written report, whether or not they tried, they send the, uh, the private institutions a bill, whether or not they negotiate. I've, that's already been done. The approach that's in place is based on that research. There's not new research to be done. There's only a decision to be made about the approach that's taken. I'm gonna be gone. It's gonna be up to the next Board of Selectmen. I hope, given the relationships that have been built and the progress that's been made, um, that they, they build on what exists rather than taking what I, what I think is a, is a, is a, um, would be a very poor route.
All right, thank you. Mr. Denington.
Um, I don't support the article. Marginally for the reasons that have been articulated by board members. I think it comes down to, for the schools, I mean, the whole success of this comes down to a discussion and negotiation. They need to know who they're negotiating with. Certainly to have one representative is more, leads to more productive negotiations than a committee and, uh, just philosophically, I agree. I think that the best way to, um, keep up progress is to build on the, the progress that I think Mr. Healy has made. And, um, just as a point of information, in reading the article, I was not familiar with Article 35 on the 2009, um, Tom Warren. So I went back and looked at it and that, the premise of that was, I mean, it's similar that if the town did not negotiate a pilot agreement that was covered, uh, a fair share, for lack of a better term, of the municipal services that the school used, then that would automatically trigger the town, um, asking for a home rule petition to exempt the town from the Dover amendments. And in reference Cambridge, I'm not, I don't know the answer to this. So if there's.
Well, that was actually amended at town meeting and the way it was passed did not include that.
Just to finish, complete my thought. Was reference Cambridge. So I know Cambridge got permission from the state legislature to exempt schools in Cambridge from chapter 48, section three. I don't know of any, I saw references to other cities and towns trying this, taking this approach, but I don't know if any of those have been successful. So the premise is what leads to the best negotiation? Is it taking this out of an aggressive or threatening posture? But it, it just, we don't really have the, the legal weapons to, uh, to, to take that approach. I think that as frustrating as it is, this year by year, building a relationship approach is gonna be more effective. And I think that the approach which is embodied in this has a good chance of going down the completely opposite direction, where the schools would say, we're gonna reduce our, um, contributions as a counter reaction to the whole thrust of these types of proposals.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Denton. Thank you, board. Patty, thank you for coming tonight, for discussing the article. Much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you for bringing it around as well.
Yep, thank you.
Before we get to reports, I'm actually, Mr. Rubenstein is, um, in the attendees. I don't know, um, in our last meeting, we give the search, we received the changes, the proposed amendments to the salary administration plan. I think Marty, it was you that said you had an opportunity to go through it, uh, or Andrew, I'm not sure. I apologize. Um, but, uh, while he's here, if anybody has any specific questions for him regarding the salary administration plan, uh, I'm, I'm actually moving this up from, um, from further down. So, uh, if we could bring Barry over and if anyone has any specific questions for him, uh, then we can kind of cut him loose and he doesn't have to hang around as we go through other items.
So is this captured on one of the agenda items or is it?
This is under board positions on town reading warrant articles before we take a position. Um,
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Hi Barry, welcome. Thank you for hanging around. Um, I don't want to take up too much of your time unless specifically, um, obviously we, we appreciate all that the personnel board does and I, I, if you want to take a few minutes and, and talk through the plan or if you just want to see if the board has any questions, it's totally up to you. We want to be respectful of your time.
Appreciate that. Uh, thank you. I did want to, before I say anything, uh, just, uh, mention the outstanding service given to the Personnel Board by Betsy Rosenbloom, our former chair. Uh, I can only aspire to come close to doing what, what she did for the committee and the amount of time she put in. So I just want to publicly acknowledge that and she had a large hand in several of the proposed changes to the SAP. But with that, you have the summary. I, I don't want to take up your time. Happy to answer any specific questions you might have.
Okay, does anyone? Go ahead Chelsea. Just kind of go down the line. How's that?
Hi Barry, how are you?
Hi, great.
Um, the change to section eight, 18, um, streamlines the process for amending the SAP. This change is intended to simplify the process for a petition or to amend the SAP. Can you just elaborate on that?
Yeah, and this was actually a suggestion to us from Mr. Purple. I, I don't know that this has ever come up frankly, that anyone other than someone on the Personnel Board or the Personnel Board through our normal processes has tried to amend it. But the old rule calls for public hearings and that kind of thing. And what we're just saying is, you know, you need to come to the Personnel Board, at least let us know what you want to do. Give us an opportunity to say, yes, we agree, we support it, or no, we don't, or don't do anything. But give us that opportunity and then if you don't like what we say, you can still go ahead with a citizen petition just as you normally would.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's all I have. Okay. Uh, Mr. Healy, did you have anything?
I do not. Um, and Mr. Rubenstein, good luck. Uh, you're right. Betsy has done a, uh, um, a remarkable job sharing that committee. So, um, um, aspirationally, I'm sure you'll do just as good a job.
We can only hope.
Thank you. Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. Um, and again, Barry, you folks are doing great work and I also greatly appreciate the wonderful work that Betsy did. I will comment that I can get through the minutes now much quicker than Betsy, but that's, that's good news and bad news. Uh, uh, no questions. I follow the meetings. I understand what you're trying to do with this. It makes sense and, uh, I'm supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Denton.
Um, thank you very much Barry. Um, I don't have any questions for you tonight because, um, I reviewed this for one of our prior meetings and was satisfied with it. So thank you for, uh, the work you've done and thanks also to Betsy.
And I ditto all those thoughts Barry. So, um, again, please share. Thanks to the Personnel Board for all the good work that they do and, and thank you for stepping into, uh, some huge shoes to fill. Um, you know, much appreciated all around.
No, thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Have a great night Barry.
You too.
All right, now we're gonna go back to reports. I'm gonna try to get through this relatively quickly. Um, under the first item is the AG decision on open meeting lockup claim from January 2020. On April 13th, the board was notified of two determinations regarding an open meeting lockup claim that was filed in January regarding a select board meeting from August of 2021. The first found that the board did not approve minutes from the August 17th, 2021 meeting within 30 days as required. While the board acknowledges the minutes were filed 19 days late and a violation occurred, I want to be clear that there was no intent to deprive the public of the minutes nor a lack of transparency. The board met six times in seven weeks during that period, including two joint meetings. All recordings were available via Zoom and on YouTube after the meeting. Clearly a mistake was made and will continue to be more cognizant of the posting requirements going forward. The second was in relation to proper procedures to enter into executive session. Due to a technical issue, the public was not allowed to have access to observe the vote to enter as required into the executive session. The board acknowledges the complaint and with the determinations, the matter is resolved per the Attorney General's office. Um, next up is LGAC update. Um, at the last, um, Governance Committee meeting, um, Secretary Heffernan joined us and shared some exciting revenue updates from the state for the first quarter. Uh, projections were 8.6% higher or 20, $2.18 billion over projections, which is good as we move through the first quarter. Uh, there's a lot of infrastructure, uh, money available, including a $9.7 billion bond bill. So we need to make sure we're proactive in taking advantage of all of these opportunities. And the Lieutenant Governor was asked about continuing remote participation past July 15th. It would need a legislative extension and she did not see that happening unfortunately. Um, townwide traffic study, just a quick update, the H B received the data. They're in the process of sorting it. We'll be providing some preliminary information in the next few weeks. Um, there is a meeting coming up, uh, the week of May 16th or 23rd. EDC is looking to meet with Reliant and a representative of the property owner. I'm looking for two board members to attend. Uh, Marika's again, is looking for a date and time availability for the week of May 16th and 23rd. Andrew and I have already attended one of these business meetings and we would be happy to attend unless obviously other members of the board would like to participate in these, then, uh, you're certainly welcome to do so.
I'm interested.
Yeah, okay. All right. Sam and Chelsea, Marty, look. Look what happens. Now you're not a part of that. So, um, so Sam and Chelsea, if you will send Marika some dates and times, we have a week of the 16th and the 23rd. Uh, we can move forward and getting.
Okay.
Okay, that would be much appreciated. Great. Let's see, MBH, MBH communities compliance, Mr. Purple is going to submit the community information form before the end of this week. On behalf of the town, it has to be filed by May 2nd. It keeps us in compliance in the draft requirements for the MBTA communities for this year. So that's what I have. Um, members report, update on master plan, Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. And, um, Ms. Rocho and I are participants in the master plan committee. Uh, quick update, making good progress with the draft plan. All chapters are now essentially complete. There are a few holes left to fill. But, uh, one of the interesting improvements over the 2008 version is that there's a lot more flesh around the implementation process that I think would be very helpful to, uh, support more things getting done, uh, as a result of the plan than our experience was from 2008. So we're excited about that. Uh, working to have a brief summary available for town meeting. And we expect to be finished with the process by the time our appointments to the committee expire June 30th. That's the goal and we're, I think, within easy shooting distance of that. So, uh, and we also hope to have a joint, uh, select board, planning board meeting to talk about the plan in early June sometime. So if I can get something on the agenda there to just touch base on that is a final check. So that's it. Closing in on it. Great process.
Yep, wonderful, Sam. Thank you. And, and many thanks to the, to the Master Plan Committee. A lot of time and energy, uh, went into uh, creating, I think, a much better document than, than this time. Go ahead Marty. Thank you, Andrew.
Um, Lisa, if you will indulge me, since I think this is my last meeting. Um, although there may be something special, but, but I am gonna, I'm gonna operate on the assumption that this is, i- if not my last, my close to last. Anyway, it's late. A very quick valedictory. You know, guy, you guys know I love buckets. So I have three buckets. Number one, the people of Southborough. Terrific privilege to have represented them for three years. You all know that. Um, uh, and I even got slightly more, uh, sorry to see you go than I did good written emails. So I figure I came out ahead. Uh, so that's bucket number one. Uh, bucket number two are the people who work for the town, both in an employment, uh, um, capacity. And, um, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm always amazed at the, the volume of work that the, uh, that volunteers do and the quality of work. Um, um, you know, it's, it's one of the reasons Southborough is, um, is Southborough. Um, and particularly, you know, Mark, you, um, Vanessa, the department heads have all, I think, um, you know, to a man and a woman, um, do a great service to the town of Southborough. And I thank you guys for the support, uh, you gave. And then the, the, the four of you, as well as Mr. Shea and Mr. Kalenda, who are the folks I served with on the Board of Selectmen. You know, one of the interesting things is I watch an awful lot of meetings and, um, uh, not all of them, I don't think, and I, I, I think this is a bit of a failing sometimes, have the, um, sort of breadth of disagreement that our board has. Um, and, and I don't think anything is more important for a representative body than to disagree on things. Because if everybody just operates in lockstep, then, um, you know, whether it's because they're afraid to bring something up or they, everybody on the board has the same perspective. I just don't think things get done and are explored as effectively, um, as they can be. Now, the wonderful thing about this board is that, is that that disagreement is there. It's there. It's there constantly and there's poking and prodding, um, but always with, with respect and good humor. And I just think that's incredibly valuable. It's, it's valuable as a member of the board. I think it's valuable serving the, uh, the town of Southborough. So those are my three buckets. Again, for the people of Southborough, it's a great place. Everybody knows that and it's because of the folks, the, the boards and the employees, you know, it couldn't have been better over the last three years. And the town is in terrific hands with the, uh, with the four of you and presumably, um, Ms. Cook joining you. So, um, Godspeed.
Yeah, I'll certainly miss having someone to agree with all the time. That's the worst part for me.
I know Marty, honestly, you're gonna. I know, Marty. Honestly, you're going to you're going to miss these short meetings that we have. And hopefully, the next chair isn't going to do me bad. And suddenly, our meetings are going to go two hours and, you know. I'm hoping that certainly is not the case. So I think it's been a pleasure, Marty, from my point of view as well. I appreciate the healthy debate that we have. I appreciate you being vice chair to your chair. I think you filled a very important role on the board. So I personally, I thank you. I, yeah, I think you brought a huge tremendous value that is going to be missed.
I'm definitely going to miss your perspective because you have a totally different perspective on everything pretty much than I do. But you can sway me, and you can also throw the jabs without making me walk away feeling badly about myself. I don't know how you can do that, but I take it. And I'm really going to miss kind of the banter that we have. So good luck to you in your career and your personal life, and maybe we'll see.
Right. Any else want to add anything?
I have very much enjoyed working with you, but I look forward to continuing working with you because we're not even halfway through this. We've got a lot of significant items on the agenda. We hope you're not. Okay, good.
I'll stick around to the bitter end.
And you do have to come to town meeting.
You do. You certainly do. And so I don't know if this is incentive, Marty, to make sure that this meeting goes extra super late and we break all records tonight, you know. Happy to do that for you. Just kidding. Okay, thank you. And Town Administrator's Report, Mr. Purple?
Madam Chair, I've just got a couple of quick items. I will offer one one thought on Mr. Healy. When he came on the board, I was told that, you know, when he asks you a question, he just wants us to sink the answer. And I must have missed that the first time when he was chair and he had asked a question. And I started to go into a long answer because I thought it needed explanation. And he looked at me after I was done speaking, and he said, so the answer is no? And I said, the answer is no. So, so again, I, you know, eventually I learned. So two things, two quick things for you this evening. Personnel, personnel related. The first one is that, and again, these happen very late, so obviously they didn't make the agenda. But the first item, at your previous meeting, you had appointed a new senior IT specialist. We received notice from a gentleman, Mr. Dolber, late on Friday, that he has, I'm just going to say changed his mind, and his circumstances do not allow him to come to join our team. I will say to a person, to Miss Hale, to Mr. Montijo, Mr. Valentine, myself, who spent a lot of time and effort in this recruitment, you know, we're very disappointed. And so now we're going to be circling the wagons. We have some thoughts. And as soon as we have something concrete, I will be sharing that with you. On the heels of that, Ms. Ms. Muncy, Marika, has notified me that she'll be leaving effective June first. Her position is EDC Coordinator. And my understanding is that she is actually moving and everything like that. So her personal circumstances have dictated that. And I just want to recognize Marika for what she has done over the past three years to help to move the EDC forward and and try to, you know, to help them get where they need to be. So, you know, we'll be having discussions, I think, in the near future as to, you know, how we want to fill that position, you know, what we want to, you know, is there anything we want to do, you know, you know, to to change that approach, to enhance, to, you know. I know everyone has ideas on things to do. And, you know, obviously, when the position is vacant, these are the times to make things, to make changes. Because, you know, the opportunity to do it when the position's filled is a little more difficult. So unfortunately, no good, no good news. So but that's that's all I have.
Thank you. I see that. So if we can unmute Ms. Oriana, I will just ask that you, I'm assuming it has to do with something that was said under the reports, which are just basically an update. It's not really a discussion point for the board. So if you would just keep your comments brief, typically, we don't entertain comments under this. But are you there?
Hello. My name is Bob Maiorana, twelve Parkerville Road. I think my friend and neighbor, Peter Lapine, might also be joining us. This has to do with our request that Peter.
Excuse me, sir? I'm going to, that is under public comment. These are just reports. There's an opportunity for public comment within the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next up is approval. Okay, consent agenda. Are there any holds to A?
Yeah.
I'm assuming there are. Okay, B? C? D? E? Somebody's looking at E? Yes. Okay. So do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items B, C, and D as in the patent?
Second.
Thank you. Well called. Ms. Melanowski?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Dennington?
Aye.
And Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Thank you. Open session meeting minutes, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. I had nothing on that, Marty. Mr. Stivers?
Nothing.
Mr. Dennington?
Sorry, which?
March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, six P M. Mr. Healy, any on those? Okay, that'll take us to April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. So Sam, why don't you start, and then Chelsea with yours?
Lines one forty-eight, one forty-nine should say, because Southborough does not have a split fact rate. So that came through backwards.
Is that it? Okay, wonderful. Chelsea, do you have any?
So Jess Rose, two-ten, two-fourteen, and two-seventeen. Ms. Patricia Burns-Fiori, there's a space missing in the first one, and her name is not.
Mr. Dennington?
April twelve?
Yes.
Yep.
Line thirty-six. This is where I'm just getting the gist of it. Mr. Healy asked, Ms. Lyden's communication. This line of the, why the emails are included? Say included in the agreement, I mean, the emails aren't included, but maybe one else covering.
Yeah, right. So she's, so she was talking about that Mr. Purple had the emails. Yeah, so we, you could say Ms. Lyden replied that Mr. Purple has the emails. Is that accurate, Mark? I think that's.
Okay, another one, pardon me, if you just know this because I have my head down. Line forty-nine. I think FY twenty-three should be FY twenty-two. Is that right? Mr. Purple could refer. Would he use FY twenty-two rather than waiting for July?
Here I am. April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Row thirty-seven. It should say, Ms. Melanowski stated presently the tree warding is paid a stipend, stipend of four thousand dollars as defined in the SAP. It's not the SAP budget. Yeah, it's on.
Andrew?
Line April.
Thirteen, yep.
Okay. Line sixteen, Marson Jones's name is just spelling of the name. I don't think there's E at the end of Marson. I did not understand ninety-two, ninety-three, maybe Marty can address this. The context is, Mr. Healy stated he does not support this file, talking about scenic roads. He said he'd like to revisit the issue of providing scenic roads. He stated the designation would provide benefits and protection to scenic roads and eliminate the hurdles for those roads that do not. Let's see how that fit within the, as I think it through, I guess it's okay. And then on lines one oh seven through one oh nine, talking about what Ms. Cook was saying about the advisory committees. I'm just confused because we look at one oh seven to one oh eight, says she stated the board is not supportive of this bylaw. Okay, I guess she's referring there, should just say the select. Right?
Right.
Okay, so I want to add select there, and then that clarifies. She said I'm one of the advisor committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Executive session minutes, April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Are these substantial substantive changes? Or do these need to be approved in executive session?
I would like to hold.
That's right. Yep. We'll put it on the next one. Thank you. So then, do we have a motion to approve open session meeting minutes, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two? I'm sorry, Marty, did you have any changes?
I do not. I do not.
Holy smoke, sorry about that. Okay, do we have a motion to approve open session meeting minutes, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two? April twelfth, twenty twenty-two is amended. April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two is amended. So, thank you. Well called. Ms. Melanowski?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Dennington?
Aye.
Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
And we are going to move you over. Okay. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is discussion of Town Administrator fiscal year twenty twenty-two goals. So per Mr. Purple's contract, in the first year of his agreement, he will not receive a percentage increase of base pay, but he will be eligible for a thirty-five hundred dollar payment to deferred compensation in May of twenty twenty-two based on goals established. So Mr. Purple has shared with the board where he has fallen through on all four of the goals that we put, including some additional things that have taken place within the last six months, maybe. I guess it would be, as well as obviously the boards, where there are other things that have taken place that have required Mr. Purple's assistance as well, all for the kind of by executive session. So we will open it up to the board for thoughts on where the board stands on if Mr. Purple has met the goals of the board put in place. And we'll will approve a motion to release the thirty-five hundred dollar payment to deferred compensation. We'll start with Ms. Melanowski.
Okay, thank you. And I did get a chance to review Mr. Purple's listing of all the accomplishments that he's had. So thank you, Mark, for putting that together and not relying on us to remember everything. And, you know, I think, I think the last six months, there's been a lot of changes in direction from the board and just from your day-to-day opportunities. I think there's still things that, you know, we need to work towards in, you know, as we prepare for the next set of goals for FY twenty-three. And, you know, I think that you have done a lot of the things that I was specifically looking for in terms of, you know, getting out with the departments on a regular basis, kind of getting that collaboration between the department heads on a more regular basis. That was a big thing that I was looking for. You know, I think, I think you have taken a lot of the feedback from the board and and myself in particular. I can speak to that in terms of being flexible on how to reallocate resources. I think, you know, being open to repurposing the ZDA position was an important part of the budget conversation. Actually, wasn't an important part of the budget conversation because you took care of it. We didn't really need to figure out a better solution for that. So I appreciate those pieces. You know, and I think as we look towards the next, the next fiscal year, I think this is a good foundation for us to build upon. And I think, you know, we have some more work to do for sure, but I think we're in the right direction.
So, yeah. So, all right. Thank you, Ms. Melanowski. Mr. Healy?
Yeah, I'm in support. I think, Mark, again, I appreciate the documentation, Mark. I think you've sufficiently met the goals to support the, whatever we're going to call it. I can't even remember what we called it. It's not really a bonus, but but the payment. Let's leave it at that. Again, the biggest thing, Mark, is I, you know, just, just, I mean, it's it's great to see. I can't, I'm sorry, I can't be there, you know, but it's great to see the board meeting in person. I mean, just the challenges of of the the last two years in terms of of keeping the town administration together and functioning and humming. I mean, it's it's really hard to overstate what a difficult challenge that has been. And I think you've met it extremely well. So I'm very supportive.
Thank you. Mr. Stivers?
We had some of this conversation before. I guess I'm supportive of the payment for the purpose of, Mark, dealing with the difficult times over the last year. It's clearly been a series of moving parts and constant adjustments, modifications, et cetera, et cetera. I still have substantial concern about longer-term proactive planning and follow-through on a number of sort of ongoing operational details that sometimes can fall between the cracks. I mentioned probably for example, administrative lapses, the basic whopping tackling. And so, but again, given the uncertainty, difficulty of the last year, I think that it's certainly appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Dennington.
Yeah, I'm also supportive of making the payment. Just a couple of observations in my first year on the board. I certainly have developed an appreciation of how challenging, difficult your job is. And I also have developed an appreciation of how I think you could see how you had worked towards each of these goals in a way that I think was very professional. And I agree, I think, with what Chelsea said, that hopefully, this is a building block because, you know, there are all sorts of ways we can, we continue to improve. And I, you know, I'm always thinking about some other ways, lessons learned from this year. So I look forward to carrying that into, I think, a confidence that you can help us achieve the next set of goals that we've set because of the year two thousand and twenty. As long as all those goals are shorter meetings, I'm happy to help the board achieve that.
Excuse me, Mr. Healy started the longer meetings, and I've just continued the path. So let's put the blame where the blame belongs. Thank you, Mr. Healy.
But but in all, and just to.
I haven't said anything. I'm sorry, Mariko. I haven't had my say yet. Thank you. So I will just say that every, every year is different, and every year is challenging for Mark, I think, based on couple of changes. And I think this is a board that has probably, in my five years tenure, asked more questions and had higher expectations. Not that everybody didn't, but we're, we're more detail-oriented, if you will, that we're just not saying, hey, Mark, we'd like you to do this. We put it in writing, and we correct it with goals. I think the thirty-five hundred dollars was certainly warranted. I think there've been a few blips, certainly. But I think overall, those blips are completely overshadowed by the the job that you've done and all of the new things that through COVID and through some of the challenges we've faced in the last few months have shown that I very much appreciate, as well, that it varies with different chairs on the boards. And I'm sure that you spent much more time with me than you did, Mr. Healy, in the past year. And maybe even with Vice Chair, Ms. Melanowski, as well. So I appreciate everything that you've done. I look forward to, you know, going into the next year, the board becoming better and stronger, and you helping us get there. So now you may.
I appreciate. So I appreciate all the comments from the board tonight. I do want to point out, if we're going to try things, we're going to make mistakes, you know. And, and, you know, and I'm the first one, I think all of you know, I'm the first one to recognize that, the first one to admit it. And the first one to tell you how, you know, what we're going to do in order to correct that. I do want to say that most times I'm sitting up here, so I'm the one that either gets the slings and the arrows.
I do want to say that most times I'm sitting up here, so I'm the one that either gets the slings and the arrows for the accolades, but it's very important for me to make sure that, that you understand. And I try to do that, I don't always, um, do it as well as I'd like to, to recognize the team. You know, um, you know, you've got Ms. Hale, you know, sitting in the back of the room. We happen to have, um, Acting Chief Newell and, and the DPDW superintendent who had sauntered into the meeting. Um, and, and I think that, you know, it's important to recognize, you know, team. It's all about team. And, and I appreciate the relationship that I have with the board. I will say, I do spend a lot of time building those relationships, you know? And, um, and, you know, and, uh, you know, sometimes, you know, Ms. Hale will say, look, you know, we've got things we've got to do, we've got to do that. I says, you know, I said, I know that I spent, you know, forty minutes with this person or I spent this, but, but there is value, we talked about this tonight in pilot discussions, is value in building those relationships, you know? And, um, you know, and, and so it'd be nice if, if we could keep some of you on the board longer. You know, I do get jealous of some of my, my fellow managers around the state that have had the same board for ten, twelve years and everything. And you really, you know, you get things humming and you get things doing. And, and I feel sometimes I spend all sorts of time, you know, with you and create these relationships and, and become good and valuable team members, and then you go away, you know? And so it'd be great to keep the continuity. And so I appreciate the fact that, um, that, you know, first of all, with the way that things are, some packets you serve at all. But I appreciate the fact that you continue to serve because it's important to keep the team together. And, you know, that's one of the things that keeps the job great for me, is the team, you know? It's not about the money, it's not about, you know, um, you know, a lot of accolades and everything, it's about the team. You know, so I, I, you know, continue to appreciate that. And I appreciate the faith the board has in continuing to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Purple. Before we, we make a motion, I certainly make a motion to do this. Uh, I see Mr. Morianna as his hand raiser. This is in relation to, um, the discussion regarding the goals for Mr. Purple. Uh, you're certainly welcome to speak. If it's related to another item on the agenda, I would ask that you wait until that item. Sir, you have the floor. Hello?
Hello?
There you are.
Okay, this is Bob Morianna, I'm sorry I buttoned in before.
No, you did, yeah, just trying to follow the agenda, sir, much appreciated.
Sorry, I'm new at this, I'm a Zoom kind of guy here.
Um, so do you have a comment specific to the discussion we're having regarding the town administrator's goals? May I meet him, please? Oh, uh, Mr. Morianna, if, if you don't have a comment related to this, if you could just hit the button to put your hand down?
Okay.
Like to comment, you are certainly welcome to comment on, on the town administrator's goals.
Okay.
All right, sir, thank you. All right, Mr. Healy, while we still have you, do we have a motion to, um, approve the thirty five hundred dollar payment to deferred compensation in May twenty twenty two based on Mr. Purple establishing the goals the board had set?
Happy to do it, so moved.
All right, Sam, would you like a second? Thank you. All right, roll call, Ms. Malinowski. Hi, Mr. Healy.
Aye.
Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Dennington?
Aye.
And Ms. Brascio, aye. Thank you very much. Uh, next item up on the agenda is, oh, yes. Okay, the board will take a five minute break. All right, tell me when we're back. Does it live on YouTube, Vanessa, are we recording again? Okay, good. All right, welcome back, everybody. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of draft management plan for Chestnut Field Farm. And Marty, this was one of the things you had asked for. Based on the time, I'm going to leave it up to you. I have a huge list of questions and concerns, so.
Yeah, I think I, 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 well, from my perspective, well, you tell, I guess first you tell me, is there going to be another meeting before?
So, tentatively, no, but we certainly could. I mean, I honestly, I think this is probably a, a pretty good discussion item. I mean, I don't know what your perspective is, I know you were, uh, you know, we talked a lot about the CR during the alcohol licenses. So, I mean, we certainly can schedule something if need be. I was just trying to be cognizant of town meeting is next week, Thursday and Friday. I mean, tentatively, sorry, Wednesday and Thursday, oh my gosh, I mean, I have people showing up at the place around time. Um, but, I mean, we, we tentatively spoke about potentially a, a, a meeting on the ninth, if we needed to.
I guess, Lisa, let's, let's do this. I mean, I, I, you know, and I can, I can obviously, you know, I'm, I'm, uh, you know, as a non-member of the Board of Select and make my, my thoughts known. But what I will, what I will say in very general terms is I, 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 I really think that, that the, um, the trustees and hopefully not the town has lost its way in terms of this property. And, you know, the, uh, 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 such a large part of this plan is geared towards how the trustees are going to use the property that the town of Southborough paid four million dollars for certain rights to, to make money. And that, you've got to be kidding me. I mean, you know, the, the, the discussion at town meeting, um, when, you know, the town, you, if not unanimously, you know, close to unanimously, um, you know, approved the, the purchase, again, for millions of dollars to preserve that property, um, and preserve the town's rights for that property. There was no discussion about how it would become a moneymaker for a town, for a, for a nonprofit. And, you know, in my view, every time there's something in there that in any way, shape or form potentially or, um, uh, clearly detracts from access to members of the town to any inch of that property that we paid for, um, there should be a, an extensive justification for why that should be allowed, um, and, um, uh, why, how the, how the town, um, act, you know, uh, access to the property is not going to be adversely affected. Again, I don't think this is a line by line for me. I really think the trustees have lost their way on this. And hopefully the town and the Conservation Commission, which is the ultimate sign off on this, it doesn't lose its way. This, this property is for the use of the people of Southborough as well as for a functioning farm, not for the trustees to use it as a moneymaker. So I'm not sure if I could, if I could state it more strongly, but I was really taken aback by this document.
So I'm, I'm very much along the same lines as you, Marty. I actually went line item by line item, compared things to the conservation restriction. Uh, I mean, some of the biggest concerns I also have are regarding the private rentals for small gatherings. I mean, the, the CR is clear as to what the structures are for. It's got to do with, uh, provided that any agricultural structures must be incidental to agriculture or animal husbandry applications. Um, I don't, and I don't, I don't know as well if the zoning allows this to be used as a gathering or potentially a wedding venue. I think that that's outside of some of my concerns. You know, the CR specifically defines what commercial recreation and educational activities are. And under prohibited uses is commercial recreation activities. And, and the definition is clear, it's recreation conducted or allowed for profit. And obviously, they wouldn't be hosting these private gatherings, private rentals. I mean, rental implies profit income from that. So I, I also, um, have a lot of the same concerns you have, Marty, though. But like I said, I, I broke it down into zoning issues. You know, it talks about at one point, um, restoration of the barn, and, you know, it talks about restrooms and, you know, like those restrooms available to the public if I'm walking the trails and I have to use the restroom is, is that barn, which is, you know, um, within the restriction that the town bought. You know, there's, there's conflicting language regarding, and I know this isn't everybody's favorite things, but even regarding the bobolinks, you know, the, the birds. It, it talks about approximately ten acres is, is managed to support grassland breeding birds, but then paragraph sentences below, we anticipate that this approach will continue to support. You know, it talks about, um, trial, trial models of pasture management, which again is, is in conflict. So again, I have a ton of issues. I mean, we can certainly go through these tonight. I would be happy to submit, again, I don't know where the rest of the board goes as far as concerns they have. I'd be happy to submit them myself to, to conservation. I worry that we're going down a dangerous path, as you, Marty, that, um, you know, specifically references to alcohol, one day licenses within the management plan. Again, so I'll open it up to the board. I, I, I do share those same concerns, Marty, that, that I think we're overstepping a, a lot of different paths on, you know, what the intent was, um, for farming and agriculture. So I'll just kind of go down the line here, Ms. Malinowski.
So I too have some of those concerns. I mean, I, I would, I do like the fact that they have educational programming in here. I think they have some, some, some really good suggestions. But as written here, I, I don't, I don't know that I support something that's going to prevent the public from being able to enjoy what it is. And I don't think it lines up with what the initial, um, town meeting vote was with some of these gatherings that they're suggesting here. I also do have an issue with including the alcohol licenses as part of the management plan. So would that lead to a common VAC? Or how does that work, you know, without having, um, the authority on a one day license to be held with the select board? So those are some of my thoughts on that.
Mr. Stivers?
Uh, I certainly share those concerns. I'm also curious, so where this is coming from? Has there been a change of the trustees in terms of leadership or strategic direction? Is something that would, something that'd drive this in a different direction? Surprised, I guess.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
I don't know the answer to that, Sam, I guess that's, and, and again, um, the conserva, um, the Conservation Commission kind of oversees the management plan, but I, I think, um, I don't know, I, I'm assuming, obviously, you know, it, it takes money to maintain, you know, the, the farm. And I don't begrudge them that, but I think they need to stay within the four corners of the CR.
But maybe, you know, if they're running into financial difficulties or something, looking at their various relationships and saying, find a way to generate revenue, that's, something like that potentially could drive some of this. I have no idea what's going on here, but I'm sort of being fair, understanding that if there's something that they need, that we can be helpful with, that's what I would like to listen to that. On the other hand, this could, again, strikes me against all of the pressure, so.
Thank you. Mr. Dennington?
Yeah, so, um, I have a little bit of a different perspective on this, but part of it is that I was not, the original town being vote about acquiring this property, that was, uh, even before I moved to town. And I don't have the, the text of the conservation restriction with me.
Would you like to see it? I happen to have it.
But I think that, like, the, I think that it's an important property where it has the potential to bring people together for, um, community events. And I would like to see the trustees have some leeway to do that. And, you know, when they, when the, for example, giving up permission to. And, you know, when they, when the, for example, giving them permission to have the, uh, one-day festival where they sold year one for, for one day. I think that would be okay on a, um, you know, not a regular basis, but, um, so, I, I don't really, I disagree with some of the premises of some of my colleagues on the board.
Fair enough.
Good to have the minority.
Well, you know, Andrew, I think the whole premises of this was obviously the enjoyment of the town. Some of the purposes are specifically the scenic views from Main Street, Upland Meadows. You know, the trails were an important part, public access for the purpose of passive recreation. You know, those were some of the main drivers and purposes of the CR. Now, again, I, I worry that, that through this, you know, it talks about, um, of, you know, events, events cost money as well, Andrew, and there are people in this town that through their taxes have paid for this conservation restriction, and they may not be able to participate in some of those events because, again, not everybody's in the same position, so.
That I agree with. I mean, some of these events that I've seen advertised, I've kind of priced it out like it would cost our family like a hundred bucks to go to this, and it for, for just a couple hours, and I find that's a little bit costly. But, did it really give permission to have weddings there?
But are weddings even allowed in the zoning codes? It's, it's.
Yeah, but I didn't see that in this document, or maybe I missed it.
Uh, oh, Andrew, I can tell you, so I haven't read it.
Celebrations, family gatherings.
It is under specifically, uh, page.
The legislation, community organizations.
Yeah, yeah. Andrew, that's under programming and public education, second page, under the bullet points. Uh, second paragraph under, it says the barn, the Deerford Barn will enable indoor educational programming, completely support that. Classes and workshops for children and adults, culinary experiences. I mean, obviously, we should support that if it's, things grown from the farm, you know, collaborative programming, but then it gets into the private lands. And I think that opens a door that, again, could create an access issue to something that the town and the taxpayers paid $5 million for. If there potentially is some big event there, and, you know, again, we've talked about the trailhead parking. What if somebody is parking in the trailhead and I want to go and enjoy the trails and I can't? I think, I think, again, these are private rentals and, and the conservation restriction was for the enjoyment of the citizens of Southborough that paid for it, so.
Yeah, I can see that some of these private rentals would be for like scouting groups. I can, I was at one, um, event like that for a scouting group, uh, at the property at night. It was, it was a really nice event. I thought it was a community, um, oriented event.
Why should you pay for it, though? Okay, but I'm just saying, as, as a general rule, it says rentals. Um, I think if the scouts want to go do something educational there, we paid $5 million for it. And, um, again, so these are just some of my concerns. I mean, the, the, the conservation restriction is, is pretty clear on, you know, what the intent was, you know, educational programs for the development of knowledge related to fostering the purpose of the CR. You know, general public access, you know, um, you know, it, it, again, I just want to make sure that we're not veering too far. Change isn't a bad thing out there, but I don't want to lose what this town, anytime you give a little bit, you're gonna give a little bit more and a little bit more. At what point does the conservation restriction and the intent veer too far? That's, again, just, just, and clearly, I respect your opinion and, you know, that's what we talked about earlier, but is the board doesn't always agree with each other. Marty, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Again, I, I, Andrew, I, I think, you know, community gatherings are great. That, that is not, that is not what this property was, um, uh, it, it's not why the town of Southborough paid for this property, period. It was never discussed. It was never, it's not part of the CR, and, and all of a sudden, it, it, it is, it is turning into a moneymaking proposition for a nonprofit, and I, 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 I am, I am offended by that notion. This, this is, this was, this was to be two things, a functioning farm and a, a, uh, uh, you know, in perpetuity conserved, uh, 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 restriction for the use and enjoyment of the people of Southborough, not for a, for a nonprofit to be able to make money off it. And that's, in my view, that's what's going on here, and, uh, again, it, it, it's not a, it, it's not even a matter of degree. I think there needs to be a bright red line and said, no, it, no, no, no. Not part of the, not part of the agreement when the town paid, paid millions of dollars for this and we're not about to renegotiate. So, I kind of feel strongly about it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Don't be shy.
So, um, again, so I guess, um, I guess probably we are, certainly have some of the same concerns, but different. Um, I don't think we're going to specifically go through all of them tonight. I think the, the general feel, Marty, I would say is, is generally supported, oh, maybe not by majority, well, supported by majority, but not everyone is in complete agreement. We can certainly send a letter to, I am certainly happy to send my concerns, you know, as, as a member of the public on my own. Like I said, I, I probably have 14 different things that I found concerning.
And Lisa, it also was striking that, that the, uh, you know, the, the open space people in town, who are, you know, you know, incredibly protective of the town's resources, had, uh, uh, you know, in, in, with, with a different slant, obviously, because that's a direction they're coming from, but also the, the, I, I would say almost the same level of concerns that I've heard expressed here tonight, and, and that, to me, is very telling.
Okay, so I think at, at this point, we'll, we'll, um, Mr. Purple and I will work on a note addressing some of the concerns we talked about tonight, um, as far as, you know, becoming very commercial. Um, and, and Andrew will certainly let them know as well, it isn't unanimous of the board. Okay, um, and like I said, I, I, I will specifically send my own comments to them as well in the management plan. Okay, so we will take care of that, Mr. Purple, and I will work on that. Next discussion is just a continued discussion I wanted to share with the board. I had reached out to the Historical Society regarding the lease, um, for the Flag School. And I had also had a conversation with, um, council and, uh, regarding this, and if he, according to how the lease is written, and according to, to law, they are, basically, the society is a, is a tenant as well. I don't think anybody on this board is looking to have the society removed in any way. I, I don't think that's the intent in any way. But, uh, the society is obligated by the conditions of the lease as far as, um, what needs to be paid. And per the lease, the town does not have an obligation to pay expenses, and the town should not be paying expenses to, um, not necessarily maintain, but for the utilities and stuff that are called out in the books. That is the responsibility of the society as the current lease is written, which, again, is, can certainly be a discussion point for, for future negotiation as it continues with, with the society. But, um, the town, public funds can't be used to pay for private purposes, and that's currently what it is.
So, we said, hey.
We've been paying since 2017, um, for the, specifically, the Historical Commission has been paying out of their budget, the Comcast bills, I believe it's Comcast, for the internet. Uh, the town has picked up for utilities and whatnot, so.
The law in effect since 2007, no?
That, well, the lease has been in effect since 2007, but the commission started picking up, like I said, the Comcast bills in 2017, so that needs to stop.
For the town, they've been paying for utilities since 2007.
I'm not quite sure, Sam, I can't give you the answer to that, other than, um, like with the second lease, it included heat, electricity, waterfall, alarm monitoring, insurance, stolen, and that's from the society itself when they signed the lease in, in 2010. So, that's something we'll certainly look into, but I think, um, what I'm looking for is, is the board needs to be clear on the position that the town cannot, based on, you know, current, um, legalities and everything, the town can't pay certainly maintenance on the building, and the town has done that. There's been two CPC articles, one in 2007 for $61,000, almost $500, and another for $13,059 in 2017. So, not to say there's not more work that needs to be done there, and yes, that is the town's responsibility.
But does not the town own the building?
The town owns the building.
So, it's our building? I'm not so dead set against pay.
Well, the, the maintenance is one thing, but the utilities.
Yeah.
That's, so according to council, it can't be done. There's, there's a variety of reasons, uh, being, you know, anti-age amendment, and that would be like using taxpayer funds. We all support, I'll use this as an instance, we all support the food pantry. But the board can't pay out of its operating budgets monies to support the food pantry. And this, this is along the same lines. It's not that we don't support the mission and we don't want them in the building, but there's certainly legalities involved, um, in what expenses the town should be paying.
So, if they leave.
Which we certainly wouldn't want, but.
But if they leave, then the town, you know, pays for it.
Correct, correct, but it's because you're paying for it because there's no lease in place. That's where the issue is, Sam. There's a, a binding lease in place that has clear obligations. Andrew, you're a, you're a lawyer, can you maybe speak to the, or? Marty, sorry, Marty, you're not sitting here. Um, so go right ahead.
All, all, all I was gonna say is, is, um, uh, I mean, I've seen some, I've seen some of the communications, both on this and one of the other issues that, that we're gonna, that's on the agenda for tonight. And I, I, I guess I would be in favor of communications with the Historical Society that come from the town, go to all of the board members, because, you know, we encountered this with, um, you know, one of the town boards where, where, you know, an individual, you know, claimed to be speaking and communicating with members of, of a, a committee and was not, and it gave us a, a real different impression of what was going on with that committee. And I, you know, I, I just worry that the same thing is happening with the Historical Society, and the board would have a very different, um, uh, take in terms of tone and in terms of substance in its discussions with the town than, than we're seeing from right now, the one individual who's representing that society. So, my recommendation would be that the town, you know, to continue, I agree with you, we can't be paying a private entity's, um, you know, utilities, bills and things like that. It, the, 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 the position that was laid out in the communications to the Historical Society, I thought were eminently reasonable. And I think we should continue with those communications, but I just think that we need to make sure that the Historical Society, um, you know, um, through all of its representatives, is aware of what's going on. Because as I said, there's precedent for that not happening.
Marty, maybe the solution is then that, um, we, we invite the Historical Society as a whole, in an open meeting. Again, there's, there, there's, you know, clearly, I, I put in the packet the communications that were had, and, you know, um, you know, maybe, maybe that will be useful, you know, to, to, and again, it's all about dialogue. And as I said, nobody's looking for the society to leave the Flag School. I just think we have to abide by the law and what it says is all, so.
No, I think that's a good idea, Lisa, but definitely something along those lines, because I think, I think a, 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 communicating with one person is not gonna be productive here.
Okay, Andrew, did you have?
I, I agree, I agree.
Okay, seems like we have. I agree too, and the only piece of information that I would like to have before we invite them in is, um, I'd like to see the last 15 years of utility bills for that building, and I don't know if we would have all the utility bills if we didn't pay for them, but if we do have all the utility bills, I'd like to see what they were and who paid them. If we have that information, understanding that the town paid the last few years, but I just think, so we understand what the dollar value is, because I think if they don't know what the dollar value is, it's gonna be difficult for them to commit, oh, I, to that, you know, and I just want to make sure that if that's, that if it's unachievable, that we figure out options so that this could work.
So, I will have invite counsel to come to that meeting as well, because I think his perspective on what we can and can't do is, is important for the, for the board specifically, so, well, we will do that at our next meeting, that maybe not the ninth, but maybe at our 17th meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Andrew, did you want to add something else?
Yeah, I just, I want to stress again, I think that the tone of your email is very reasonable, and it's making the point that the current tenant, uh, thing, uh, is not in compliance with the lease. This is an attempt to benefit both sides.
Yep, and, and again, Andrew, that was, as I've said repeatedly, it's, it's trying, trying to do what we're required to do, that's all. Okay, so, we will, in agreement on that, um, next up, board positions and warrant articles. The board still has outstanding, we can either take positions tonight, or we can do it at a meeting just before town meeting, but it seemed the board was pretty much in agreement on the salary administration plan. And on to, I would at least suggest we take a position tonight on the salary administration plan. If the board's ready, we could certainly take position on the citizen's petition, so we can do that just prior to town meeting. I know, um, I'm not sure if, if Mr. Waysham is going to advisory at the next meeting, I'm not sure. The board can certainly, um, participate in that, he was invited to come tonight.
I'm, I'm here, interested in hearing what he has to say before we take a position.
Okay, so why don't we, on the citizen's petitions, we can do that just prior to town meeting, or is the board comfortable? On the two we talked about, so, okay, Sam, so.
The only thing I wanted to hear was, uh, advisories, because they're, they're the crux of the article 33.
Okay.
Um, but if the board wants to go tonight, that's fine. I just, I would like to hear what their, if they have any suggestions on that, but.
I think that makes sense, yes.
I'm, I'm fine with that too. Okay, Marty, you good with that? Okay, so, okay, so do we have a motion to support the salary administration plan as printed in the warrant?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Ivors?
Aye.
Mr. Dennington?
Aye.
And Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Okay, there's one, sure, go ahead.
Do we still need to do roll call votes?
Yes, because Marty's not here.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so, yeah, the public has, I, that was my first thing. We know how Lisa loves roll call votes to begin with, so.
Sorry, Andrew.
Party slowing us down again.
Okay, next up is seven, we're gonna hold off on that. Trees and scenic roads, is the board, I, ready to take positions on those?
This is as presented in the current warrant.
As presented in the current warrant, yes. Marty, are you? Okay, uh, do we have a motion to support Article 27, the tree bylaw as printed in?
Can I?
What?
Maybe, something that I haven't thinking about. I don't know that we have a good answer right now, how this fits into the budget.
Okay.
Okay. And one way that, I, I floated this idea when the last meetings was to just have an amendment so that the implementation of this aligns with the next. This one, I, it looked like there was not really support from the planning board for that. I think their concern is they want to have the, the more robust tree, warrant, procedures in place immediately, but I just don't think you're right to have a great answer for how much this is gonna cost, whether it's budgeted. So, I, I would be supportive of that. I don't know what the rest of the work is. July 1st, 2023 to 24. In one way, like, one of the advantages of, if we had done this at a fall town, there would have been a plan, a plan. if we had done this at a fall town, there would have been a plan, a plan to kinda catch up and deal with it with two separate articles, one with like a funding source, and then with this. So I guess really it would have to be, um, July first, two thousand twenty-three. Yeah, because that's really the only way that we could say, I mean, just reviewing the minutes of one of the last minutes, it's just kind of a, a guess whether, um, when the line items in the PPW but for tree experts is gonna be enough, I, I've never really gotten a firm sense of exactly how much this is gonna cost.
So are you gonna get an answer to that prior to town meeting, or you, I mean?
I think we haven't, and I don't, I don't see us getting an answer to that.
Okay.
So that was the idea to have a delayed and support this with the delayed implementation date, and then that gives us time to get the funding in place.
So.
Or else, or else, you know, I think, uh, Ms. Cook asked a good question, right? So we get into this, we have the initial expense of the hourly fee for tree warden, starts costing way more money, how, where are we paying for the budget? Still a little unclear.
So are you suggesting the board of selectmen make an amendment on town meeting floor? Because what's being presented at town meetings is what's in the warrant is what we're taking the position on tonight.
That's, I guess.
Now, what may be amended?
Um, I would like to see what other people think of that. I'd like to keep going, support that, and see what goes.
Marty, thoughts?
I, 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 I am ready to vote and no one will be surprised at my position. Again, I, I, I looked back at the, at, at my notes and uh, it's, it's sort of striking to me that no one else, no other town in the Commonwealth except for Boxford does things the way that's being proposed here, and I'm at a loss for understanding why we should be doing things so dramatically different than other folks, as well as the cost issues and otherwise. Um, so my position's been pretty clear throughout.
Is that on both articles, Marty?
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't, I don't get, I don't, I, both of them fall into the same category in terms of, of outliers when you look at what other towns do.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, well, that's, I guess that's what I'm asking.
On the amendment idea, it sounds like Sam is not supportive of it. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not supportive of that, but the other.
I, I, I think that's, vote Andrew would have to take place at town meeting if amendments on the floor. I don't think there's, the only thing for us now is what is in the, the warrant. And I, I will share the concern regarding the funding piece as well, and I don't think it's answered. And, and that's one of the reasons why I, I can, can take a position on this tonight.
I agree it's not answered, but I think we can figure it out.
So the thing is, Sam, my only concern is we, we, if we don't figure it out and something comes up with the tree and somebody's told they have to pay, and there's no, where, there's no account specified within the warrant where this is gonna go, there's no, whether it be a revolving fund or whatever, nothing is set up at this point. That's my concern, is, is it, to bring, my concern is that it, it should be in place when it goes to town meeting. And, and, and potentially, if it could be done at a fall, then you could have both, as Andrew said, both pieces in place, and then.
Yeah, maybe that's what will happen.
Well, maybe that's what will happen.
And I'm, I'm saying this to, I am very appreciative of all the efforts and put into the article, and I, as I studied it, not, not the scenic roads, one, the other one, starting to make more sense to me, I just think that the planning board, understandably, doesn't, is not as close to we are to the budget piece of this. And one of the things I think of is, what if it costs way more money, would this really be like a reserve fund transfer? Not really, it's not anticipated, we knew that, um, something like this was possible.
All right, so it looks like we're ready to take a position. Do we have a motion to support Article twenty-seven as printed in the warrant? So, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, look at it, Sam, I figured Sam was gonna do it. Waiting, oh, God.
I have some questions.
Um, roll call vote, Ms. Delonowski?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Mr. Dennyton?
No.
Mr. Healy?
No.
Bracio?
No.
Okay. Um, scenic roads.
Ready to vote?
Ready to vote? All right, do we have a motion to support Article twenty-eight as printed in the warrant? So.
Second.
Sammy wasn't gonna do it again. All right, Ms. Delonowski?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Mr. Dennyton?
No.
Mr. Healy?
No.
Bracio?
No.
Okay. That leads us down to, well, thirty-three, citizens petition thirty-three, we decided to wait on. Uh, is the board willing, ready to take position on Article thirty-four? Okay, do we have a motion to support citizens petition for Southborough Private Committee Article thirty-four as printed in the warrant?
So.
Second.
Thank you, roll call, Ms. Delonowski?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
No.
Mr. Dennyton?
No.
Mr. Healy?
No.
Bracio, no. Okay, and the other two, I, like I said, we'll see if, if, we'll leave those at town meeting, unless people are ready to take positions that I'd like to hear. Certainly open to the board, if the board's willing to take positions on um, Article thirty-two and thirty-five, or if we wish to wait until after the advisory at town meeting.
Wait.
Wait, okay. All right, so, okay. Uh, that is gonna lead us to I, which is a potential amendment to Article thirteen capital. So I am going to start with Mr. Healy, I'm gonna go to Mr. Purple, and then I have something to add as well.
Okay, um, I alluded to this a little bit earlier in the meeting, but um, first I'll address it. It's, it's item E in Article thirteen, which is the um, fire pickup truck, which is a sixty thousand dollar um, capital item for the town. And right now, the um, uh, the, the plan had been for that sixty thousand dollars to be covered by ambulance receipts. Um, and it appears that that money will be able to be freed up because based on discussions with um, Rob Gustafson, Gustafson, the headmaster over at the Fay School, they're willing to make a two-year commitment payable in June of this year and payable in June of twenty-twenty-three to cover the entire cost of that pickup truck. Um, that's in addition to the ten thousand dollars that they've been contributing um, uh, based on an agreement going back a number of years for the public safety facility. Um, you know, great discussions with Mr. Gustafson, usually involve Mr. Fay, who's the um, the chair of their board of trustees. Um, and, and again, this, this, I touched upon this earlier in terms of the approach I think the town should be taking in deal, deal, in terms of dealing with the uh, nonprofits. Uh, you know, I've sat face to face now for the third year with the representatives of these institutions. And um, they are, they are interested, they made it clear that they're not going to do um, uh, the payments relating to operational expenses or the like, but they're happy, particularly in the public safety area, to um, consider and take to their boards, payments to cover capital items. Um, and in this instance, um, enthusiastically, the folks at Fay, um, you know, were willing to cover the entire cost of that pickup truck for the uh, for the town. So kudos to them, and hopefully the uh, the relationship that's been developed over the last several years won't be upended by some rash decisions. So that's the, that's E, and do you want me to leave that one for discussion and then go to item G? Um, Lisa, your call.
I, I think Mr. Purple's gonna cover the discussion of G.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, 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 I'll have Marty go with G, and then we'll, we'll discuss both the
Sure.
it, the items and the finance team's recommendations.
Sure.
So go ahead, Marty, go to G.
Yeah, you might remember last year, um, the uh, St. Mark's um, made three separate contributions, committed to three separate contributions. One was uh, forty-eight thousand dollars and change, and with that um, amount reflected were the taxes for the properties that they had purchased on Main Street. So basically, they looked at what the taxes um, were for those properties, and they made a voluntary contribution to the town in um, an amount that, that uh, reflected those amounts. In addition to that, they made a three-year commitment to cover the cost of um, PPE for the fire department. Um, that's already reflected in the budget. Um, in addition, last year as well, they made an eighteen thousand dollar um, uh, voluntary contribution for some additional equipment. Um, this year, in addition, this year, they're doing three things again. They're upping their contribution related to the properties um, to fifty-one thousand dollars, and let me get the exact amount. Um, it is fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars, so that's contribution number one by St. Mark's. Um, they are making the twenty thousand dollar contribution, which is year two of a three-year commitment they made for the uh, uh, purchase of equipment for the uh, fire department. And I guess they're doing four things this year. They're um, making a voluntary contribution of fourteen thousand dollars to pay the total cost of the purchase for new radios for the fire department. Uh, but the other thing they're doing is because last year's contribution um, for a separate capital item was eighteen thousand dollars, and this year, the capital item that they're addressing, in addition to the, to the uh, is fourteen thousand, uh, they're making an additional dollar uh, contribution to bring the total up to eighteen. So for the, so with fifty-one, eight, um, uh, twenty and eighteen, it brings them to, to a total this year, I think it's the highest they've ever made, of approximately ninety thousand dollars. Um, and as I said, two, the two capital items will be take, will be addressed with an amendment. Number one is the pickup truck, and number two are the radios. And Mark, I'll, I'll turn it over to you. Well, I guess the, the final thing I'll say is, same thing with, with St. Mark's. Um, uh, John Warren and uh, uh, the finance guy, Rob Kukliat, are terrific. Um, um, I think they value the relationship that's been built up over the last three years. Uh, the conversations with them about how they can contribute to the town of Southborough are uh, you know, are, are freewheeling, um, productive and respectful of the respective positions that the town and the private institutions find themselves. And as I said, I'm, 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 it's not gonna be me, obviously, but hopefully um, nothing happens to upend the trajectory that that relationship has taken, and uh, uh, a, a new member of the board of selectmen will have the pleasure of dealing with those institutions, so that's my spiel on that.
Thank you, so we'll go to Mr. Purple, who's gonna give us some budget updates based on that, and we'll open it up to the board as well.
So if you take a look at Article thirteen with regards to um, the list of items A through N that there are for capital items, uh, Mr. Healy has just delineated about seventy-eight thousand dollars in donations. So the amendment that would be made to um, to this article on town meeting floor would be to remove items E and G in their entirety. Item F, we would change that, the item still remains at ten thousand dollars, but the levy amount would be six thousand. See, that would be the four thousand, the additional four thousand dollars undesigned to the St. Mark's that Mr. Healy spoke of would be applied in that fashion. And then item N, which is the police cruiser, because again, there's seventy-eight thousand dollars in savings on the tax levy side, but we don't wanna lose the uh, the ambulance, um, uh, ambulance receipts of sixty thousand dollars. Sixty thousand dollars would now be applied to item N. And this would be, and so this, the changes to that article would be something that I would uh, carry um, or, or Ms. Bracio would carry um, uh, to the capital committee meeting on Monday night to, uh, for their consideration, hopefully their approval.
Okay, we'll, we'll open it up to the board for comments on that piece, and then I have another piece to add as well, but let's, let's start with that.
Um, I think that's great news, Marty, thank you for um, working with the schools on committing to those items. Um, so I guess this is just a process question. Um, are we going to vote this at pre-town meeting, after capital, that's it?
Yeah, about same time, okay, okay, yeah, that's it, thanks. Mr. Stivers?
Excellent, great news, and again, good work, Marty, and I think that just reinforces the conversation you had earlier about this, about setting away, structure, uh, productive relationship that builds over time. This is more evident, I think it is working as a tendency, so, thank you. Same, I agree.
Marty, anything you'd like to add? I think we've added some great stuff so far.
No, I mean, it's, the, the one thing, and I've told the schools this, i- you know, when you look at, when you look at the um, uh, whether they call them pilot payments or otherwise from, from um, uh, from other towns, um, one of the things that certain institutions are very good at is they are, they will list, they will publish on an annual basis the, the non-monetary contributions that they make to the town. Um, and, you know, uh, you know, I had kids who were, all of them were athletes, and, you know, they're, they are all incredibly familiar with the fields at St. Mark's and the fields and gymnasium at Fay, because, uh, you know, that's it, that, that over the years, I mean, it's been a little bit different during the COVID um, experience, that's, that, that is a non-monetary contribution that those schools have been making to the town um, for an awful long while, and they, you know, whether it's, whether it's Heritage Day, the big lawn that they make available or otherwise, I've encouraged them of, I mean, they've got their own uh, uh, you know, processes that they have to deal with, but I've encouraged them to, to publish that sort of material, because those sort of non-monetary contributions are are a significant contribution to the town as well. But other than that, again, terrific people to deal with, and, and whoever from the board has that um, responsibility going forward, I, I'm sure will enjoy it.
Great, thank you, Marty. Um, one last thing I wanna add under Article thirteen, so the North Grove Room Cover, the bid came in much higher than anticipated, um, for a variety of reasons. I'm, you know, obviously, we know how tough it is to get equipment these days as well. Um, so we basically have a seventy thousand dollar earmark in the state art grant that Andrew was instrumenting on getting as well. Mr. Purple has reached out to see if that is specifically earmarked.
So in other words, so, in other words, is that, is that having um, uh, an expiration date, so to speak?
Yeah, okay.
So.
Yes, sorry, thank you. So he's reached out about that, so basically, with the seventy thousand and the thirty-eight thousand here, we're about eighty-four thousand dollars short. So, um, obviously, yeah.
Forty thousand dollars short for the North Grove Board.
Yeah, so the board is gonna have some, some further discussion on this, but I think the first part is, as Mark reached out to Senator Eldridge's office to find out, you know, gets more specifics on this. I wanted just to keep it on the board's radar, um, what the board wants to do. Do we go forward with thirty-eight thousand?
Can soak Senator Eldridge double with.
I know, um, you know, we, we can leave the thirty-eight on here, but it seems kinda crazy. I think the board has some discussion as to what path we, we wanna go down. Am I missing something?
I just, I think it's a, a lot of money that we need to make up, and we just talked about process of how this is gonna work, so, I mean, you know, I think we're I think this need, needs more substantive conversation, and I, I think it makes sense probably for us to reach out to advisory capital, um, given that advisory's meeting this week, the capital's meeting on Monday, and get their take on this, because I, you know, I, I think, I think that the table is different now.
Yep.
And I don't know that I'm actually supportive of going forward without having it vetted more. Um, so I, I don't think we should remove it tonight, but I think we need to. So I, I don't think we should remove it tonight, but I think we need to potentially be prepared to remove it at pre-town meeting, depending on how those conversations.
And tie it in, obviously, with the amendment that's, we're already talking about. So I just, again, getting the board's feedback, I'm giving a little heads up that, that kind of this is the path. I think a lot of it is important, and where we also get from Senator Eldridge's office is how this, what the tie is to this specifically.
And, and I know the board had previously discussed, you know, and, and I think Ms. Gallagher brought that up, do you want to discontinue the road?
Yeah.
And the board really, I'm not sure you took a position, but you didn't want to, you didn't want to draw a line in the sand on whether that was something you wanted to do or not. And maybe that's something that, you know, the next board is going to want to revisit.
You know, so I'm eager to continue the project and not discontinue the road. I guess my initial reaction is, can we go back to the engineering folks and say, is there a different way to do this? It doesn't involve this kind of, I don't know, but sometimes under pressure, people come up with different ideas. I'd be interested in asking that question.
Andrew, and then Marty, I'll go to you next.
Yeah, just one thing to keep in mind is that when residents came forward with the idea of getting, asking for support for abandoning just a hill road, more just a hill bar, one of the reasons, that was tied into the question of whether to discontinue. So I, I would still like to go forward with this, I mean, this is just disappointing, frustrating, but I guess the times we live in, inflation and construction costs, it's just amazing how the cost of this has gone up. I, that's a good point, Sam, is there a less Cadillac way of doing this? Hold it underneath the.
Well, you know, I mean, the, you know, the less Cadillac way has been the last five or six years that we've simply put a steel plate over it, and it's continued to hold, it continued to hold, had to hold, until it didn't.
Maybe thicker steel.
And that, yeah, and that, and that's kind of why, well, when the, when the plate starts to sink in, you know, I mean, you know, we now have an issue, the road is just not passable until we do something with it, so, you know, we, we bought more time, I think, than we deserved, and we pushed the issue down the road, and, and now here we are, so. But, but I don't disagree, you know, can, can we take a look at this, is there something else we're missing?
And I, I think we need to have the answer from Senator Eldridge's office.
It's actually, just to clarify, so Senator Eldridge's office was the vehicle to help us get it, it's the Division of Fish.
Wow, fair enough.
For some reason, that is the, that is the vehicle, and that, and we're getting a contact, just to check on that, because again, this, this contract with the state for the money wasn't signed until March thirty. It wasn't that much before that, you know, that, that finally, you know, from the time that it was announced to the time they figured out where the money was coming from, you know, it took a lot of finagling at the state level to figure out how they were going to do this, so.
And, and I think too, another point is, getting that answer kind of gives us a direction as well. I mean, if the cutoff on using that, those funds, you know, is, is six-thirty, we have a bid, who are we going to come up with, eighty-four, five? It's not like we can pull it out and have, I mean, there are options, I'm going to leave it at that. I mean, if we, if there's any way to get an extension on that money, then potentially, we have time to explore and bring the fault in. So, again, just things for the board to consider, that's just an update, not looking for anything tonight. Marty, I didn't forget about you.
Yeah, I don't have much, I don't have much to add, I mean, it's frustrating, but, you know, you know, with the St. Mark's thing, we were able to kick, you know, several times, maybe we can, you know, kick the timetable a little bit on this one and buy ourselves some time to, to think about the best way forward, but I, I don't have any bright ideas.
All right, so.
Sorry, Marty, are you going to reach out to the chairs to talk about this?
Yes.
Thank you. No, no, thank you, Chelsea. Assignment of articles and motions for town meeting, so a cheat sheet was kind of put together for us. I don't know if anyone has anything specific, other than I will add that under the capital budget, as in the fall, we actually had the Chair of Capital make that motion and speak to that. So Marty, I don't think you're going to be heartbroken if we allow Jason to take that one. Newton Street Water Improvements. Again, Andrew, are you going to be heartbroken if the Chair of Capital makes the motion and attends?
So do we have the bid on that yet?
Yes.
Which one?
Newton Street.
Yes.
Yeah, do, can we see that?
Yes, now I'll report to you.
Yeah, super secret stuff.
Okay.
Okay, and then the Near East School feasibility study, as, as well as Chair of the Building Committee, I'm more than happy to relinquish that to Mr. Malinowski as well, and I think he's, he might be having, you know, something on the screen for those as well. I don't know if anybody has any issues with any of the other ones, I'm going to offer one suggestion before I open it up to everybody, is Chelsea has been working with the finance team on putting together a slide under the budget to show about the split. So Sam, would you be willing to change that motion and, and comment on that to Chelsea? And then Chelsea could give to you the Capital Improvement and Planning Committee motion, which I know you've been very good at attending those meetings as well.
I'm fine, you're welcome.
Okay, so are you okay with that?
So we probably just need to add, we probably want to add a C, Malinowski, and a J, just so that you don't have both of us coming up with that.
Okay.
So, one other thing I just want to point out, so that everybody doesn't get beholden to your articles.
Correct.
The moderator's preparing a consent list, okay? So it could happen that the majority of your articles get wiped off in one consentless motion.
And I've already paid him to do my list, so it's not going to mess up my play.
It's structured accordingly, I understand.
I think he would have objected about your article.
Yeah, so, so Chelsea, you're good with that as well?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, perfect, so, do you have anything?
So who will you change?
So I am changing Article thirteen.
So nine is, is changing from Sam to Chelsea.
Correct, and then in replacement is thirty-one is changing from Chelsea to Sam. And I'm happy to go over these with you tomorrow, and then we're adding Jason to, Mr. Malinowski, excuse me, to thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Yep.
Those, unless, now Chelsea, do you have anything that you, else you may have an issue with that you may want to change?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. Stivers?
I'm fine.
Mr. Dennington? Mr. Healy?
No, I'm, I'm going to take my, my flak jacket from the Main Street Project and the downtown zoning out of mothballs for Article twenty-five, happy to do it.
All right, so that takes care of that, that leads us to one other item. I put this in the packet, this is information for the board only. So back in two thousand nineteen, Town Meeting, there was an article for the restoration of the Civil War flag. One of the conditions on the funding for that was a signed affidavit between the society and the town affirming that the flag will remain in the society's possession if it's gifted to the town. That was the actual article, I believe that's in the packet. In, in August twenty-eighth of twenty twenty, Mr. Weisham provided to the CPC a letter, I necessarily, not an affidavit, it's not signed by vote, but again, pledging that it will remain in the collection if it's dissolved, will be offered to the town of Southborough. So Town Council has been working since last year to take care of this requirement before complete funding on the article from CPC is complete, because there were two, two parts to that article. So in conversations, Town Council with, with the Mr. Weisham from the society, Town Council presented an agreement based on some of the conversations we had, and I put in the packet, just so the board is aware, this was the response, Town Council is going to continue to work on this, but as my time as Chair comes to an end, I just want to make the board aware of some of the things that have been going on behind the scenes. So that's, that's really the only reason that this is in here, happy to answer any questions, but this is an ongoing process, and Town Council will continue the discussions with the society.
Do we think the society is going to dissolve?
No, of course not, but it was a town meeting vote and a condition, right? So, no, I don't think there's any thought of that happening, so, but, again, it was a vote of town meeting, and we're trying to abide by the conditions that town meetings set. That's the whole purpose of this. Mr. Malinowski, anything? No? Mr. Healy, anything?
No, except that, the same point I made earlier, and that is, I, I, I think it might be helpful to make the entire board of the Historical Society aware of the communicate, I mean, you know, Mr. Talaman's communications are respectful and cordial, and, and I, I think the society as a whole might react differently than some of the responses Mr. Talaman's getting.
Mr. Dennington?
Any break?
So is the board looking potentially then to have Council continue the discussion, which was, was my intent of bringing this up, or is the board looking to have, when we have the society committed to talk about police, talk about this as well?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough, and then we will take care of that, so, any other comments, questions on that? Okay, that being said, public comments, if you have a comment, please raise your hand, Mr. Moriana. Can we unmute?
Can you hear me?
You are muted, sir, I can hear you, you don't need to sit.
Sorry for the interruption. My name is Bob Maiarana, I want to raise an issue that Peter Lepine first mentioned to a neighbor of mine about the ability now that we have to reduce the speed limit on Parkerville Road North from thirty to twenty-five. That was, I was a, on the Trotter Building Committee back in ninety-five through ninety-seven with the responsibility for setting neighborhood safety issues as well as the landscaping around the Near East Trotter complex. This was always our, always our want-to-do back then. We were not allowed to change it from thirty-five by the state, and it was actually Willie Collieri, the Chair, the Police Chief, who came up with the idea of posting thickly settled so we can get thirty. We're now confronting with COVID and all, and if you've spent a lot of time at Parkerville North, there are a lot more kids walking, speeds are up. We had the EverSource upgrade, and when that's paved, Karen said eventually, speeds are going to go up again. So I had to raise this issue to Andrew and Sam at the transfer station, and I kind of previewed that to them. I think it's a slam duck, because we, we care most about the kids, there are a lot of kids now, when you consider the Trotter, Near East Complex, plus Fay, plus the St. Mark's Track Team, you can almost set your watch by them, they come by three-thirty in the afternoon. People, how, everybody's got a dog now, I'm just asking, it seems to be a slam duck, and I'd, I'd ask you to do that. If people go twenty, if it's posted twenty-five, people are going to go thirty, thirty-one. If you post at thirty, we already see traffic, speeds going up to forty-five, close to fifty, and it's getting alarming right now. So I'd like to ask the selectmen if, since we have the ability to do this, when we didn't have the ability from the state back then, if we could remove the thickly settled signs and post twenty-five, just as we did on Deerfoot Road, excuse me, on Deerfoot Road. I think it's going to be a great addition to safety in, in the neighborhood, and that's our, what we're asking you to do, if you would consider that.
Thank you, and, and the intent was, I know that you guys have reached out as well, the intent is to have this as an agenda item after town meeting. And, you know, bring you in and have the discussion on this, and like you said, you spoke to Andrew and Sam, so that, that is where we, what the board is looking to do at this point. And Town Meeting.
So have a, any town meeting agenda item, is that what you said?
No, sorry, it'll be on a future Select Board agenda, Town Meeting.
Oh, okay. Great, do you support that, can I ask, can I ask the board, do you support that? The move to twenty-five?
I think the board would have to discuss it, I specifically can't speak to that tonight, I would want to, you know, look at the, the traffic data and the facts. I can't speak for the rest of the board, Ms. Malinowski?
Yeah, I think where it's not listed on our agenda, we shouldn't.
Correct, that's true, Joe, sorry, it's, thank you.
As being a member of the Trotter Committee, I wanted just to mention that it was back then, the Chief of Police's idea to do that, he, along with our engineering firm, actually went to Brookline, went to Newton, studied how to put in speed tables on Parkerville Road, and the speed tables actually have been a great improvement, but now I think we need, we need more, the, the speeds are up and the population's up. And since we have the ability to do this without going to the state, I think it's the right thing to do for the kids, and that's all.
Great, so thank you, and, and again, I, I apologize, Mr. Malinowski is a hundred percent correct for four hours almost into the meeting, and yes, it's a public comment and not up for the board to deliberate, so, again, thank you, and you can look forward to an invitation at a meeting at some point after town meeting to discuss this further.
Thank you very much.
You have a great night.
You too, thank you.
Thank you, all right, any other further public comments, please raise your hands. I see none, I thank everyone, all of our attendees, for hanging out. At this point, do I have a motion, the board will be entering the executive session for MGL Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, and not returning to open session, to one, ratify the Memorandums of Under, sorry, Memorandums of Agreement with Police, Fire, Communications Officers, and/or Public Works for Successor Collective Bargaining Agreements, exemption two, and two, update of contract negotiations for the DPW Superintendent, exemption two.
So much.
Second.
Thank you, well called, Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Stuck, Mr. Healy, sorry.
Aye.
Aye, first.
Aye.
Mr. Dennington?
Aye.
And Ms. Groucho? Aye, thank you all for attending, if.